Okay, I am calling this meeting to order at 1:01 PM.
We have the mayor, yourself, and trustee Steen. I can confirm a quorum?
We do have a quorum. We have two trustees who should be joining us any moment, but we are going to start now. Welcome, everybody who's here, everybody who's watching us online. We will start with our safety message invocation and pledge of allegiance from Ms. Angela Rodriguez.
I'll review the evacuation procedures so that we are prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarm, follow the instructions announced through the PA system. If asked to evacuate, use the glass door to exit outside and verbally alert others. We'll move to the main parking lot in front of the building or the AT&amp;T parking lot at McCullough and Brooklyn Bridges. Our security team will be watching and notify the appropriate emergency services. Lastly, we'll also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority, and while we hope this information is never needed, we want to make sure that we're prepared. Additionally, we ask that you remain seated during the duration of the meeting, keep the aisles clear, and do not block any exits. Will you please stand with me for the invocation? "We thank you for the many blessings you have freely given to each of us. We ask for your presence to guide this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees, provide them with the knowledge, compassion, and wise counsel needed as they discuss the business matters on the agenda today. Help us all to remember that we are stewards acting on behalf of our customers, and provide us with the grace to serve all people well. We ask this in your name. Amen." Now please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. We will now move to public comment.
Public comment provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of this meeting's posted agenda items. We'll invite pre-registered speakers to speak, and they may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda. Speakers should state their first and last name, the organization or group they represent, and the agenda item they are going to speak on. For this meeting, we have 27 in-person speakers. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. Thomas, will you please cue the timer? Our first speaker is Ms. Henrietta LaGrange, followed by Alan Montemeyer. Will you please allow two minutes?
Good afternoon. My name is Henrietta Quetta Flores LaGrange. The organizations I belong to are the Mulberry Street Girl Gang, Lulac, Razonida, and CEO of Growing Up Brown. And I want to thank the board and our audience, which is the best employees, CPS Energy employees, past and present. Thank you for your dedication and hard work. But I am in favor of your peak meters because I think that's the best way that I can cook my beans, los frijoles, and that's me. And I want to thank Ms. Gina Ortiz-Jones. I'm just going to tell you, Gina, I'm proud of you. Stay tough, hang in there. Don't be swayed by people that have negative comments about you because you're great. Ms. Gonzalez, you too, and I'm proud of you. And Ms. Romero Francine, I did comment that I love your dress attire, and you look great. But let me, and Mr. Steen, it's going to be sad that I'm not going to see you here anymore because I did ask for a private meeting with you, and I never got one. So I guess the one that should be sad is you because you missed out on a lot of information I had for you. But let me tell you, Mr. Garza Rudy, you're here to stay. Remember, we are the majority here, and we're going to keep you here because you have CPS where it needs to be, and you're guiding CPS where it should always stay. And that is because we love our citizens here, and we're going to do the best for our citizens. And I love CPS Energy, all the employees, past and present. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaGrange.
Alan Montemeyer, Sierra Club. Well, it's business as usual for CPS. The press release of September 16th announcing three natural gas peaker plants, 1632 megawatts, 1.4 billion plus O&amp;M costs. Where was board approval for this? You made a big show about how much money you need to approve. Where was board approval? I didn't see anything. Did I miss something? Where was citizen discussion on this decision? Where was, and Mayor Jones, where was city council oversight on this kind of a huge decision for the city? You're going to lock us into natural gas for the next 30 years by this decision to put these peaker plants online. Is this, was this a business decision strictly driven by windfall profits during times of peak energy demand and high wholesale prices? Can you see past the next bloated check to the city of San Antonio? Are you going to sacrifice the legacy of our children and our grandchildren to climate change? Are you going to sacrifice the greater than 20% of your customers who are sweltering in poorly cooled homes that are energy burdened and can't afford our energy bills right now? The STEP, the Save for Tomorrow Energy Program, Mr. Tiarina is going to give us an update on that. It's a day late and a dollar short. You need to expand that. Take the windfall profits and help people weatherize their homes. Install more solar. Install the H2Oaks that you're going to see a handout on. Work with local businesses in the city of San Antonio to put in renewable and battery. It's much cheaper than all the other sources. Must I stand here every month and be a poor substitute for your consciences? You know, climate change is real. It's here. You'll notice that I'm wearing a shirt that says "The Future Equals Electric", and that is not natural gas. That is renewables plus batteries. Please look to the future. Lower our greenhouse gas emissions sooner, or is it going to be growth at any cost? Or is it just going to be business as usual for you guys? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemeyer.
Thank you. Next, we will have Adrienne Shelley, followed by Gordon Wilson and Michael Gilbert.
Hello? Yes. Hello, thank you, Adrienne Shelley. I'm the Texas Director of Public Citizen. Appreciate the opportunity to deliver these comments today. I'm here to ask you to reinstate the residential solar rebate program that's part of STEP. I'd like to address some of the concerns that we've heard about predatory solar sales tactics. These are certainly valid concerns, but Mr. Garza, we appreciated you joining us on Sunday last weekend. But you sort of implied that the existence of the solar rebate might be responsible for some of the fraud that has happened. We haven't really seen any evidence of that directly, and the review of STEP that just happened didn't show any evidence of that. But in any case, there are state laws now that are going to protect us from fraud. We have two bills by Senators Aferini that have gone into effect. Senate Bill 1036, which will require licensing and registration. Senate Bill 1697, which will create the Rooftop Solar Consumer Protection Guide. These two laws taken together are going to address many of the problems that we faced here in San Antonio. We heard about out-of-state operators behaving badly. Operators are going to have to register in the state now. Retailers, salespeople, and contractors will all be required to register. We heard about companies going out of business and leaving customers holding the bag. Insurance will now be required for all solar companies operating in Texas. We heard about contracts being confusing and misleading. There will be standard contract language with required disclosures and educational materials that will have to be disseminated. We've heard about the contractors themselves being shady. Contractors will be licensed, and the contractor themselves is required to obtain all of the necessary permits on behalf of the residential solar owner. We've heard about customers being misled about costs and rebates. Information about costs and rebates will be in the materials that have to be distributed. We heard about fraud. There will be fines, warnings, even contract cancellation. There will be a five-day cooling off period after which people can cancel their contracts. So, we need more residential solar. The fraud problem is being addressed, and so we encourage you to reinstate the solar rebate in STEP. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley.
We were looking for Gordon Wilson. Gordon Wilson? Okay, we will be moving on to Mr. Michael Gilbert.
Thank you for having me. Mike Gilbert, 2014 retiree of CPS Energy. I was here two meetings ago talking about the insurance changes, and I've lost my notes on my phone. But there was another point that came about that I thought of after the fact. My point on the first meeting was the loss of the hearing protection. And I negated the say during that meeting. My wife also wears hearing aids. So that's another hickey out of our pocket if our plan goes away, to the tune of $6,000 every five to seven years, which is what we've been averaging. The other part, the main reason I brought my wife into this discussion, she recently retired from her job three years ago. And her insurance at her job was free to her because she just had her self-insured, no children. Where on my plan, I kept the whole family involved even though it was just her and I, and I could have actually dropped her for probably 20 years since my last kid left home. But we chose to keep it that way. And so when she came to retirement, we chose to let her insurance lapse and not pay for two insurance because she's covered under mine. So now with these proposed changes, that we were totally unaware, and this would have been a totally different conversation had we known this was coming, and maybe even a different decision to let hers lapse, and we can't go back and pick it back up. There again, this isn't fair to us or anybody else, retirees that are in this same boat. A lot of us had their wives had insurances also, but pretty much everybody let them lapse. So that's enough on the hearing aid part. Another item, I've had the misfortune of attending four funerals since my last time here of CPS retirees. And I don't know why they're looking at me as a spokesman for this, and I speak with Mr. Garza at our last retiree luncheon at the park. People are saying there's not a lot of questions, but by God, they come to me with tons of them. And I says, "Don't shoot the messenger. I just go to the meetings. I let them know what I know." In parting, I say, "I think we should have a choice to stay with what we have" based going to something we know absolutely nothing about. That's asking us to make a tough decision because there's nothing out there on it yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
Okay, next we will have Deborah Ponse, followed by Jason Ponse. Okay, well, Jason, please come up.
Oh, actually, I believe... Hello, my name is Deborah Ponse. I am a lifelong South Side resident. I'm also a climate justice organizer for Public Citizen and a West Side adoptee for the neighborhood. Hi, Janie. Also, the reason I'm here is to put my respect and support out there for Ms. Diana Lopez as she tries to take a position on the CIC. This particular organizer and respected person in our city has been a lifelong South Sider. She grew up there, and she spent half of her life there with us, right next to the Milton Lee CPS gas plant and those neighborhoods, and now she lives on the East Side. I appreciate that the CIC committee will be comprised, or is comprised, of our community members, but I am strongly asking for you to put an actual community member with lived experience on that committee. She can represent both the South Side and the East Side nicely, and we need a seat at the table, real people. And so that's what I'm asking for. If you will respectfully consider Ms. Diana Lopez and put her in that seat. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ponse.
Hello, my name is Jason Ponse. I want to talk about an organization I volunteer with called Urban 15. Urban 15 is an arts organization that specializes in ensemble dance. They are a South Side institution and have operated for many years. Urban 15 is supported through grants and donations. I come to you today because I want you to know that the current White House administration will soon be cutting some of the grant funds that are so vital to the operation of Urban 15. However, there is a way that CPS can help U15 currently. Currently, Urban 15 has to pay commercial rates for electricity. They are a nonprofit organization. It is composed of poets, musicians, dancers, writers, and filmmakers. All of the art that is produced is usually given away for free. CPS could help Urban 15 to continue its mission by charging a more reasonable rate for power. But if you really wanted to help us, you could help us to become energy independent through the installation of solar panels. U15 operates out of an old church, and the cost to hire an electrician to update the building to support the solar panel integration would be far beyond what Urban could pay. You could volunteer some of your electrical expertise and get our building up to date and solar-powered. Overall, I think it would be a win-win for everybody involved. You could bask in the positive PR. Your employees could get some volunteer time, and U15 could become energy independent, and that's all I have to say about that. I also wanted to talk about my experience with the hiring practices of this organization. In particular, I wanted to talk about requisition number 25829. This is a job posting for an entry-level engineering position. It only requires a bachelor's degree in engineering, which I have, and some of the preferred qualifications are programming experience in C#, Python, and an EIT certification, which I also have. I have applied for this position, waited for four months, and was quietly rejected. However, I saw that the job was reposted on the website as requisition number 25829. When I tried to reply for it, I was denied. I simply would like to be considered for this position. I don't know what happens behind the scenes, but when I see a position reposted like that, I can only assume that the hiring manager must have somebody in mind already. And if that's the case, then the postings shouldn't be put out on the website because people like myself invest our time and energy into applying for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ponse.
Okay, next we'll have Ms. Pat Major. She will have six minutes, as she has, two people have seceded their time to her.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. My name is Patricia Major. As I had previously stated, I'm a retired certified public accountant. I'm a 2002 retiree from CPS Energy Financial Services and Accounting. I was an executive, the controller and assistant treasurer. I want to thank the board for the service that you're doing to the ratepayers in the community. I know this job seems thankless sometimes when people come and talk all the time and complain. I also want to thank you for listening to the CPS retirees who've been coming to the board meetings since April 2025 to talk about the issue of the new CPS Group Health Plan changes. Today, I'm specifically speaking about the agenda item 6C, the minutes from August 25th. We compared the draft of those minutes to a video transcript, and what we found, to no surprise to myself and other retirees, is the brevity of the minutes for August 25th and other prior meetings. We're concerned about this because we think it shows a certain amount of disrespect for the board in not noting when you show concerns at a meeting about holding staff accountable or management accountable for something, and it isn't documented in the minutes. And also, this concern for speakers who come and make points that are not documented. Regarding the August 25th meeting minutes, I specifically want to talk about the public comments section. Four retirees spoke for about 15 minutes, and the minutes only show one sentence with no specifics. On item number seven, the committee reports, one sentence was shown in the minutes for that meeting. There was no discussion questions about the EBOC or the Audit Committee reports that were presented and accepted. For item number eight, last month, the 2026 Health Plan Update, this presentation was followed by questions and discussion by five trustees and three CPS management people that lasted 45 minutes, but in the minutes, it only gets five sentences. The next thing is the last item, number seven, the capture of action items at the end of the meeting. There were five specific action items mentioned in relation to the 2026 Health Plan, and these were not reflected in the minutes. Instead, there was a short sentence. With specifically respecting the 2026 presentation, there's a number of things that the board asked about concerning the more than 80% of the Medicare-eligible participants that will receive comparable benefits. Your question was, "Tell us more about the 20% that won't." And then there was also a statement that with the premiums and deductibles, that the cost will be reduced by 30% as compared to the current plan. This presentation lacked significant discussion of dollars, other points, and we don't understand why. Trustees had important comments and questions about these points that were not included in the minutes, but were expected to be followed up on. 1,400 people, or 74% of the retirees, are impacted by this major change. 500 of those people pay the lowest premiums because they have 35 years or more of service. They consider, some of these people consider themselves to be healthy, and so their real issue are the premiums because they're not using the medical or drug cost very much. So for most people, the out-of-pocket monthly premiums for Plan A runs about $21.85. It will now be $85, which is a $63 a month increase, or 289%. 20% of the retirees not receiving comparable benefits. Who are they? What are their demographics? What about the spouses of these folks? And none of this was noted in the minutes. When they talked about the Slide 5, the robust governance issues, trustees asked questions. We have some of our own. Does this governance process allow for adequate evaluation consideration before major plans or changes are approved? Where is the input from participants, including these retirees? What's the rush for making this decision? These questions were also asked by the board, but they're not noted in the minutes. Other critical information was included from discussions with the EBOC committee, such as the certificates. The board said they were never shown copies of these certificates. With regard to the Slide 6, the retiree health coverage, they mentioned that there was valuable benefits to support retention. Well, clearly, these certificates added to the retention in prior years, and now we appear to be just discounting them. They said that the plan will closely replicate CPS's Group Health Plan. But let me assure you, for those of us that have studied this, a self-insured major medical plan is not comparable to Medicare and a Medicare Supplement insurance policy. A statement has been made that 98% of the providers accept Medicare. Amwin has provided this data point. My own experience in the last seven, eight years has been I've lost two primary care providers who decided they no longer want to accept Medicare or insurance. We also think that direct billings will be disrupted for retirees. We foresee that some vulnerable people will forget to sign up for the auto pay, and their coverage might be dropped. At the last meeting, one of the things the board asked about was to contact people who've been speaking to get their permission to provide disclosure of certain information. I was contacted, and I declined to give my permission because the analysis that was described only include medical claims for two years. It excluded drugs, addition ventils, and the premiums. It was clear to me and several others that this was not going to make a difference because staff said, "This decision has been made, and there will be no exceptions." We continue to be hopeful that the board will act to give choice, and we also ask that retirees be allowed to participate in EBOCs and administrative committee meetings. Thank you for allowing me to speak again.
Thank you, Ms. Major.
Our next signed-up speaker is Javier Calderon.
Good afternoon. My name is Ramon Moreno. I am the Regional Manager of Facilities and Construction here in San Antonio. Hi, Janie, my childhood friend. I wanted to talk about the STEP program that is here in San Antonio and CPS offers. It is our goal at IDEA Public Schools to continue that partnership with CPS. A significant part of our culture at IDEA encompasses being good citizens. We teach our scholars how important it is to be members of San Antonio community and who make a difference. During the summer and early fall, San Antonio campuses participate in the Energy Reduction Program that CPS offers to reduce the power grid during peak times. Participation in this program teaches our young scholars the importance of conservation, the ways they can contribute to our community, and what can happen when schools and civic entities partner. Now, it is also going to teach them the network of adults committed to supporting them through their college goals. For the past several years, our participation in CPS Demand Response Program, IDEA facilities teams have been able to meet their mark and meet the benchmark in receiving over $250,000 in funds. The choice on how to use these funds became very clear, working side by side with our facilities teams, asking them why they work at IDEA. Each answer received grew us closer to knowing what we're going to do with that money, and that was to create a scholarship for our scholars that are graduating, and 100% of those proceeds help them through their first year of college. In doing so, we wanted to make sure that our mission stayed true, and it's not just words. It's a belief that we shared with our facilities teams all the way up to our CEO. Now, more than ever, we have a saying at IDEA that "Rising tides raise all ships." And my hope is that we can continue to partner with y'all so that we can sell those ships to the next level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Deborah Henrich. She has three people seceding her time to her, so please cue the timer for eight minutes.
Good afternoon, esteemed mayor and board members. My name is Deborah Henrich, former CPS Energy Benefits Manager, and I'll be addressing item eight today regarding the health plan information you requested at the last meeting. CPS Energy reached out to some retirees requesting permission to release medical claims information with no names or any way of identifying...
Deborah Henrich, I'm sorry, can you lean a little closer to the microphone?
I'm sorry. CPS Energy reached out to some retirees requesting permission to release medical claims information with no names or any way of identifying who the medical claims belong to. I consented as long as the entire picture is presented for analysis. That would include not only medical claims, but also pharmacy claims. In addition, the entire premium should be disclosed, not just the base premium, but the premium that includes a credit for being a Medicare participant. Also, what needs to be incorporated into what was paid would need to include the HCA reimbursement that is granted to Plan A participants. If only the medical claims and deductibles are provided to the board, it will present a skewed picture of what is really paid by a retired participant. I wasn't able to get a sufficient answer as to what will be presented to you today regarding answers to your questions about how retirees will actually be impacted by the proposed plan versus the current CPS Energy plan. I was told that because of the sensitivity of the information, we are not planning to share the results in a public forum. Since there is no sensitive information attached to the claim, why isn't there transparency for the public to see? for the public to see? We also ask that you inquire as to the number of individual whose claim information is reported, so that you can determine if the sample is statistically significant. Another tremendous retiree concern is the payment of hearing aids. I have included a handout developed by professionals and testing that demonstrates the link between hearing loss and dementia. Treating dementia-related illnesses can be much more expensive than providing coverage for hearing aids, not to mention the quality of life that is improved by being able to connect with the world around you. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Henrich.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Ms. Didi Balmadas, Shannon Mills, followed by Peter Bella.
Good afternoon, Board, Mayor Didi Balmadas with Public Citizen. I'm speaking on agenda number 11. Want to congratulate CPS Energy staff on reaching the three-year milestone of the STEP program. I especially want to recognize the hard work that went into launching the multifamily weatherization program, because oftentimes renters are at the mercy of their landlord and management company and need help with making their homes energy efficient. Look forward to seeing the program expand to more customers. When the board voted a fund STEP for another five years and $350 million, the residential solar PV rebate was discontinued, but not the commercial program. I'm going to reiterate my comments I made to the board last year that this move was shortsighted, but it's not too late to help residential customers again. I'm asking the board to reconsider reinstating the residential solar PV rebate. My recommendation is based on the 2024 independent analysis of the STEP program by Frontier Energy. This recommendation for the residential solar program is based on its significant contribution to demand reduction, energy savings, cost effectiveness, and emission reductions. In fact, the residential solar PV program delivered more benefits than the commercial solar program in terms of the utility cost test, net energy savings, coincident and non-coincident peak demand savings, 4CP lifetime avoided carbon emissions, and first year NOx emissions. Reinstate the residential solar rebate. Rebate should be offered to all customers when an added rebate amount for low to moderate income customers. There are a lot of residents who could benefit from a rebate, especially in Trustee Gonzalez's quadrant where District Four had some of the highest number of solar installations. One commercial customer received an $80,000 solar PV rebate. $80,000. That's a lot of money for one customer when Trustee Gonzalez's constituents are some of the city's most financially vulnerable and could benefit from the energy savings solar panels provide. While Frontier Energy's analysis clearly demonstrates that the residential solar PV program was very valuable to the utility, this analysis only considers a portion of the value a distributed solar provides. Another more thorough analysis of the value of distributed solar-
Thank you, Ms. Philmars. Your time is up.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Shannon Mills. I own BLCCS, a full-service energy efficiency controls, mechanical, electrical, now plumbing contractor and consultant in San Antonio. I just really wanted to start by thanking the board for their continued support of STEP. I was actually able to start my own business in 2017 because I kind of saw a need for commercial buildings and to utilize the program more efficiently. I work with a lot of nonprofits in San Antonio. STEP helps customers fund a way into energy efficiency. This is a year-over-year impact. Unlike a lot of people, I like energy efficiency and demand response more than solar just because it's like a continued gift of, you know, once you optimize it, your ROI on solar goes down. So optimization is always where I like to start. Saving energy allows lots of places that I work. I love nonprofits, Haven for Hope, Tobin Center. I know there's school districts in town utilize demand response money year-over-year to help them run their businesses, and when they're more efficient, they're not spending it on utilities, and they're able to help really run their business and run their missions. Energy efficiency and demand response, I still feel like are underutilized in San Antonio. I think there's a lot more businesses and buildings that could utilize all the help they can get. So thank y'all for continuing to support the program, and I mean, it's really been awesome. I have 50 employees now, so I never thought that I would have 50 employees as a woman in this industry, and I appreciate everything that this program's allowed me to do and start, so thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Mills.
Good afternoon. How's everybody? I hope you're well. My name is Peter Bella, and I'm here representing myself, although I must thank Rudy Garza on behalf of the Sunday Planning Group for his participation in the Sunday, the September 21st public event. The event was part of a national celebration of solar energy and the progress we've made in implementing it. That's why it's a pleasure to stand before you today and support the STEP update described in the board presentation materials. A multifamily program for energy savings in apartments coupled with demand response programs, including battery rewards for EV owners, together with the expanded proposal for community solar, both as a subscription pilot as well as panel ownership, as well as residential rooftop solar offerings, all promise an exciting path for residential customer solar installations. Simply enough, thank you for these offerings. Along with many of the environmental justice advocates around the CPS Energy service area, I will be watching for details and opportunities to engage in dialogue on the programs in the coming year. We are eager to support progress made in using renewables. Mr. Garza, thank you again for participating with us in Sunday. I look forward to supporting all programs involving renewable energy generation and battery storage, which avoid the use entirely of fossil fuels. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bella. It's been a long time since you and I met on a project. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Ted Slansky. He had three people seat their time to him, so please cue him for eight minutes.
Hello, I'm Diddore Slansky. I'm here on behalf of all the citizens of San Antonio, all the employees of CPS and the retirees. I'm here to address deficiencies in the minutes and all information provided to the board relative to the board's authority and oversight of all matters of CPS Energy. As such, I would like to reiterate and elaborate on my comments made at the June 30th, I'm sorry, the June 10th, 2025 special board meeting, when I addressed the transparency of the board issues, of the issues to the board, and this was on the item on the CEO's salary, the special meeting. First, I would like to reference the December 22nd board meeting, Agenda Item Eight, Governance of Benefit Plans. On page five of the board packet, I quote Section 802.001, Definitions. In this chapter, governing body of a public retirement system means the Board of Trustees, Pension Board, or other public retirement system, governing body that has the fiduciary responsibility for assets of the system, and has the duties of overseeing the investment and expenditure of funds of the system and the administration of the benefits of the system. Followed by the following that was also on page five. The Administrative Committee is the governing body of the CPS Energy Retirement Plan and has a fiduciary responsibility for the plan assets. I believe the same would hold true for the group health plan and other benefit plans. I conclude that based on the approvals of the pension and health plans prior to December 22 through today, there appears to be conflict with the Texas Government Code, specifically Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter A, General Provisions. Definitions. In this chapter, government body means a board, commission, department, committee, or agency within the executive or legislative branch of state government that is directed by one or more elected or appointed members, or D, or I'm skipping B and C, a deliberative body that has rulemaking or quasi-judicial power, and that is classified as a department, agency, or political subdivision of a county or municipality. As such, I'm going to quote excerpt from the Office of the Attorney General of Texas Open Meetings Act Handbook 2024. Section 5, Government Bodies, Chapter D, Committees and Subcommittee of Government Bodies. Generally, meetings of less than a quorum of a government body are not subject to the Act. However, when a government body appoints a committee that includes less than a quorum of the parent body and grants its authority to supervise or control public business or public policy, the committee may itself be a government body, subject to the Act. One example of this is in Willman versus the City of San Antonio. The city council established a subcommittee consisting of less than a quorum of council members and charged it with recommending the appointment and reappointment of municipal judges. The appellate court reviewing the conclusion on summary judgment that the committee was not subject to the Act stated that a government body does not always insulate itself from the Act's application, simply because less than a quorum of the parent body is present. Because the evidence indicated that the subcommittee actually made final decisions and the city council merely rubber-stamped them, the appellate court reversed the summary judgment as to the Open Meetings Act issue. So my point is that I believe those subcommittees, I'm not sure if it's the Administrative Committee, the EBOC committees, but they're subject to the Open Meetings Act. Several more items of note. These are more unlike the public comment section for the board for these meetings. The registration process for public comment has changed here at CPS for these meetings. It is my understanding changes to the actual process to register changing from eliminating emails for public registration to a portal link would have to be considered by the board as an item to vote on. Secondly, there's a conflict in the current CPS website notification being portal registration is the only allowed, while the board packet materials still have registration stating email registration. So there's a conflict there. One says make a public, you have to go to the portal. Another place says you register online or through email. Lastly, are you aware that the special meeting held on August 14th Agenda says special board meeting, which is correct, but the webpage link displays regular board meeting? So that is, if you go to the webpage, it doesn't say special meeting for that special meeting held on August 14th for the $1.4 billion bond approval. So it's very misleading. And this is for both the Agenda and the board packet links. To be transparent, I believe both those links on the webpage need to stay the same and not change after I speak today. It was posted as a special meeting but listed as a regular meeting. And not that it's a legal issue, but the last minutes posted of CPS board meetings on the website are of April, as of last night. May and forward meeting minutes have not been listed. I worked for CPS Energy for 29 years. I worked with city council members. I worked with city staff. I worked in the rates department, rate design. I worked with the regulatory legal department. I worked with some of these people out here in electric distribution, the line extension policy, rate design, cost of service, in all areas of CPS. And I'm here for the citizens of San Antonio. I spent 29 years working for the citizens of San Antonio, and Mr. Steen, Mayor, y'all have given me the inspiration because to come up here and speak today. And all these people here retired. I don't have the years of service that they have. They worked hard. There's a lot of citizens that can't come. I've talked to hundreds of hours on the phones to people. They don't understand the implications of what's going forward. My current statement of benefits is 91 pages. That's the document that says what health services are covered. Now, what's not been, these retirees, they pay Medicare. So they pay Medicare $184 a month apiece, plus the CPS premium. CPS insurance is only secondary for retirees. What was promised was not a change in plans, but that it would be the same as active retirees. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Slansky.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Lawson Picasso.
Good afternoon, Board, Madam Chair, Mayor. It is a pleasure to be in front of you guys today. My name is Lawson Picasso, and I am here as the Chair for the CPS Energies Community Input Committee, also known as CIC. With me today are actually a few members of the CIC, and I'd ask if they could please stand to be recognized. Gentlemen, don't be scared. Thank you. The CIC, it's been an honor to be the Chair this year, and on behalf of us, I would just also like to thank the Board of Trustees, especially Chair O'Meadle, for your supportive engagement in with the committee. Chair, you have regularly attended our meetings and also have always offered an extension to be a great sounding board for me as we continue to move forward with this new dynamic for the CIC. So thank you so much for that. This support has also included providing strategic guidance to the CIC as we embark on the first review of our committee bylaws, giving our members an opportunity to modify areas of ambiguity after our first year in operation. When I started off this year, I told everybody, I said, the training wheels are going to be on. This is a new dynamic, but this is a great opportunity for us to understand how we can continue to evolve to ensure that the CIC is working the way that it was established. And as you know, the CIC is a board-created volunteer advisory group that consists of 19 members, and it is to ensure that we are channeling the community's perspectives to the CPS Energy Board and senior management, providing input on strategic initiatives, key projects, and utility business activities. We do believe that the diversity of perspectives is well represented in the proposed bylaw revision before you today, which the CIC approved by a vote of 12-1 at our August meeting. And a few highlights that I'd like to get through really quickly is to clarify that the CIC is not a deliberative body, nor does it have any rulemaking authority. Retitling the subcommittees to working groups to more accurately convey that these groups do not act independently or make decisions behind closed doors. And also to reaffirm that the current CIC structure is affected with full committee meetings remaining open while working group sessions remain closed, allowing members to freely explore early-stage ideas and ask questions without concern. And I just want to thank all my CIC members for their thoughtful input and collaboration through this process, and we thank you for your continued support, and I look forward to the conversations today. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And our final two speakers of the afternoon, I have Diane Lovett, who will have four minutes, and Amanda Griffin, who will have two.
Good afternoon. As the wonderful lady mentioned, my name's Diane Lovett. I'm actually from Bandera County, Bandera, Texas, grew up there, came back after 11 years in Dallas, which was nine more years than I intended to stay. At any rate, my husband and I have a guest ranch called Hill Country Equestrian Lodge, very close to the path of the Howard Solstice Power Line Project. I have had many questions about this. We were not given very much notice in our community about this project until very recently. I know of at least two people whose properties and even buildings are in the direct line of one of the proposed routes of this power line, and if I had not told them about it, they wouldn't have known. September 4th, our county judge request, well, we had a meeting September 4th by our county judge's request. We had had no- We had had no offer or communication in terms of, hey, we'd like to tell you more about this project, up until that time when he insisted that we really needed to do this in our community. I went to that meeting, and my first question was, how did we get here? This project just sounds like an absolutely disastrous thing to do, especially if any of the proposed routes of this power line go through the Texas Hill Country. I grew up in a time when it was mostly agricultural there, but it has, over many years, transitioned to basically a tourism economy. And our reputation of being in the Texas Hill Country, and this goes for other counties around us as well, really is what anchors our whole economy for everything else. Even people who don't live and work there or have businesses there, they come there because they appreciate the beauty, the peace, the serenity, the feeling of open space and timelessness that that whole region represents. You bring this 200-foot, but even wider than that, 370-mile power line through that area, it will never be the same. And it passes right by our ranch, which adjoins Hill Country State Natural Area, by the way. One thing I asked was, how did we get here? Well, in 2023, the Public Utilities Commission of Texas said to ERCOT, you need to come up with an electrical reliability pan, plan for the Permian Basin. No mention of the descriptions that I have seen of how this benefits San Antonio. Also, it was to come up with a concept only, not a specific edict as to how, where, or when this would be built or done. Also, there's, we kept hearing in this meeting reference to the commission's PUCT's criteria. Never have I seen these criteria, not on either AEP or CPS website, haven't been to the PUCT website and looked at it in detail, but to me, there's just been a tremendous lack of information. This has all kinds of health and environmental concerns. I clearly don't have a lot of time to go into those, but I will tell you that it goes everything from wildfires to all kinds of health concerns, agricultural concerns, wildlife concerns. Many conservation easements are in that area, as well as two-state parks. We would all be affected by it. And people in San Antonio are going to at least pay for part of this in the beginning. The whole state of Texas users of electricity will end up paying the $33 billion deal. Personally, I think the whole thing is a horrible idea, and it should really not even have ever been approved. Well, it hasn't, the whole final plan hasn't been approved, by the way. And I do believe that there's still a hope of getting it canceled. If not, just please keep this thing out of the Texas Hill Country. It will be devastating, both economically and as quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lovett.
I'm sorry, I'm accidentally grabbing someone else's notes.
Thank you.
My name is Amanda Griffin, and I'm here today representing the Hill Country Preservation Coalition. We are a growing coalition of residents and organizations mobilized to oppose the inclusion of our counties in the Howard Solstice 765-kilowatt transmission line project. I hope that you have all had the opportunity to dip your toes in a Hill Country River at one time or another. The Devils, the Sabanal, the Medina, the Frio, or my personal favorite, the Nuasis River. We have several reasons for opposing this project, including our local property values, the expense of running a project like this through our rugged topography and geology, our area being part of the crucial migratory routes for birds and butterflies, and our economy's dependence, as Ms. Lovett mentioned, on tourism, which increasingly is ecotourism and astrotourism. The lifeblood of all of this economy in the Hill Country is our pristine river stream segments, among the last pristine river segments in Texas. So our coalition believes that we can achieve the increased energy, power grid reliability, while still preserving the globally recognized treasure that is the Texas Hill Country. And our encouragement to you is to run these routes, avoiding the major river basins in the Texas Hill Country. The Devils River Basin, which includes the Pecos and Devils River, the Nuasis River Basin, which includes the Frio, the Sabanal, the Medina, Seco Creek, and of course, the Nuasis River. We believe that this is a natural asset to our state and deserves to be preserved, and we just appreciate you taking that into account when CPS prepares its final application for the Public Utility Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin.
Thank you all for your input. I will now return the meeting back to Chair Romero. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to double check, was Ms. Isabel Hernandez accounted for? She was on the list?
She succeeded her time to Mr. Slansky.
Okay. All right. I have a few remarks to make, so I'll ask for your patience. I'll try and go through them quickly here. There's a couple of things that I would like to clarify, and I have worked with our legal counsel to make sure everything I'm saying is correct. So the first thing I wanted to address was about the minutes, because this question has come up. We have listened to it. I wanted to get some more answers. I know that Ms. Ramirez wanted to get some more answers. She has double-checked our process with the city clerk, the San Antonio city clerk, and with the Texas Municipal League. And we believe that our method of keeping minutes is entirely appropriate. The rule is that you have to either have written minutes or post a recording. We do both. Action minutes are what we use, where we focus on motions, agendas, the topic of a presentation. This avoids disputes over characterizations. I have been on boards before, where the old style of trying to capture what everyone said was used, and it doesn't work out well. Now, if you don't have recordings, sometimes that's necessary. But we also have the recording. It's very important that we never have erroneous information in our minutes, and if trustees find that, we can certainly address that. But the tone and the depth of the minutes is something that can vary, but again, we believe that our method is completely appropriate. Now, Mr. Slansky brought up some comments about things that were possibly mislabeled on our webpage, and I'm sure if someone has not already checked into that, we will be checking into that soon. Next, I wanted to address the retirees and the healthcare plan. And I just want you to know, obviously, we appreciate-
Madam Chair, could I have a point of order?
Yes.
I'm not, I'll ask our general counsel, but I'm not sure that you can comment on things that have been brought up in public comment.
The Open Meeting Act allows the Chair to make responses, statements of facts that are absolutely sufficient, but it would be inappropriate to go into in-depth conversation about items that were not agendized.
Well, she's, she went-
I reviewed the comments, and I believe that they're perfectly acceptable.
Right, but she talked about the minutes, and that should be a discussion. So she's able to do that under a general agenda item. And I think it should be agendized, and then we could participate in the discussion about it.
Thank you for your feedback.
I know I speak on behalf of the entire Board in telling the retirees that we absolutely appreciate your history of service to CPS Energy. I know we say that a lot, and we can say it again. We also understand your frustrations. As the vice chair noted, many of us are at the age where we are making this shift, and it is very, very unsettling. I want you to know that we have heard you. The decision is final. There are 1,600 people who are involved in this plan. We know that a handful of you are very unhappy, but I need to say here that the Board is not the plan fiduciary. EBOC is the plan fiduciary. The plan is revisited every year. And I'm also happy to say that based on feedback about the hearing coverage, that we will, that CPS Energy is pursuing a benefit to restore the hearing aid and hearing assistance into the plan. So we did listen on that point. Back to my regular remarks. On our new generation assets, I want to congratulate the CPS Energy team on the closing of the acquisition of new gas plants in southeast Texas. In 2023, we approved a generation plan that was going to include a mix of resources, including natural gas, and the team continues to take action on meeting those goals. By acquiring recently constructed, currently operating power plants that utilize proven technology already in use by CPS Energy, we can avoid higher construction costs, inflationary risk, and supply chain risks associated with building new facilities, all to the benefit of our customer owners. The team is going to continue to make strategic decisions that are going to be in the best interest of our community and employees, with a focus on reliability, which is the most important things in survey after survey with our customers, and affordability, and yes, with full cognizance of the climate crisis, at least from my perspective. I don't want to speak for everybody. Our E2B team is connecting small businesses to resources. This is the Energy to Business Team, is actively in our community, connecting small businesses with resources to save energy and save money through their educational series. And there is an event coming up on this Wednesday, October 1st. The next session in the series will be about how small businesses can achieve their sustainability goals. This workshop will introduce small businesses to free services that can help businesses conduct waste audits and assessments, access sustainability tools, resources, and supplies, and earn certification and recognition for your sustainability efforts. Space is limited, so register today for this free event. I would like to thank all applicants for the D2 board vacancy. That application period has closed. We have had a very large number of applicants, and the Board thanks every one of you who took the time to put in an application. All of you will be contacted as we progress through the selection process. And finally, I would like to recognize somebody in the audience today, Mr. John Kelly, just in case he was thinking of leaving early. John Kelly has been a great friend to CPS Energy, and he is now moving on to greener pastures, in a way. We'll get to that. John is a retired civil engineer with a career specializing in transportation, spanning 45 years in Texas. He spent most of his career with the Texas Department of Transportation, beginning in 1968 as a summer engineering technician, and culminating in 2003 after 10 years as Tech Dot San Antonio District Engineer. John served on the CPS Citizens Advisory Committee for five years, serving as Chair in 2023, and then the Community Input Committee, or CIC, in his first year of operation, helping to build the new committee. As a professional engineer, John brought an active curiosity and desire to understand power generation and distribution to his work with both the CAC and the CIC. John was appointed to the City of San Antonio Zoning Commission as the District 8 representative on August 14th. This will prevent him from finishing off his last few months on the CIC, because he will have plenty to do on the zoning commission. And although we will miss the vast experience and unique perspective he brought, we wish him well. John, our paths have intersected quite a bit, and I do wish you well on the zoning commission. It is a tough job. I know that the people of District 8 will be served well by you in that position, and thank you so much for your service to CPS Energy. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I will now turn it over to our CEO for recognition and remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's good to be with our Board today. So today, on my CEO recognition, I'm going to recognize our second quarter core value award honorees. First and foremost, again, you know, our core values are the how we go about doing our jobs on a day-to-day basis. There are guiding principles that shape our culture, drive our decision-making, and enable us to deliver exceptional service to our community. Our core values define who we are as an organization, and they're at the heart of everything that we do. We created this recognition program to highlight individuals and groups who are outstanding examples of our core values in action and in alignment with our Vision 2027 strategic direction. And again, these are employee-nominated, this is an employee-nominated recognition program. So the second quarter honorees included Oscar Anzaldua. Is Oscar with us today? Where are you? Oscar Anzaldua, who was recognized by a customer for his outstanding customer service, integrity, and character. The customer mentioned his true servant heart, something all our customer service reps have here at CPS Energy. Another example includes Rejino Gonzalez and Eric Ibarra from our gas department. Where are you guys? Are you guys fine? Are you here today? They may be out doing leak surveys. These men were recognized for safety and well-being. While surveying for a gas leak, they came across a separate safety issue, I believe it was a downed power line, and they stopped the job to ensure the area was safe, and they contacted the appropriate personnel and waited to ensure that help arrived. These individuals, we are honoring today, all of them, and I think the group was probably three times this big when we did the ceremony in the cafeteria a couple weeks ago. They're modeling our core values, earning the trust and respect of those around them, which is why their peers, colleagues, and our customers nominated them. They consistently go above and beyond expectations and deliver outstanding results for our community. So please join me in congratulating them for this well-deserved recognition. Thank you all. Thank you all. Good job. Appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you all. Well done. Good job. Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you for having us. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Appreciate you all. Y'all have a good one. Appreciate it. Trying to keep up the good work, buddy. All right. Thank you, guys. Okay, so on the agenda today, I'll just highlight a couple of items. You know, always a good opportunity to talk about performance. The second quarter, I think there's a lot of goodness in the report today that we'll talk about, and as well as the, you know, the opportunities that we have that, you know, we will talk about mitigations on. Again, our annual step update, we committed to the Board when the Board was approved, when the step, second version of step was approved a few years ago, to come back in year three and let you know how it's going. So we look forward to that feedback and conversation today. And then I'll also mention that we're going to give you an update on the ERCOT mobile generators. That process is progressing nicely. I think we've worked well with ERCOT to ensure that we have that backstop there if needed, but I will tell you that we expect those generators to run, to not run, much during their time with us, and so we'll talk about that today. And we have a couple of CIC items on the agenda that we also look forward to getting the Board's feedback on as well. So with that, Madam Chair, turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we are on item six, Consent Agenda, which today consists of the payment to the City of San Antonio, minutes from the special board meeting, and meetings, and minutes from the regular August board meeting. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second? Any discussion, Mr. Steen?
We have three items on the consent agenda, and I'd like to vote on the minutes separately.
Ms. Ramirez, can you give me some advice on this? Because we have a motion on the table.
Yes, a motion's been made, so you can go ahead and proceed with the motion. You asked for withdrawal of the motion, and go ahead and proceed to vote individually. It's your discretion.
Which item did you want to pull from? You want to have each one?
I think, I would like to, I'm probably going to vote against one set of minutes and for another. So I guess I could vote against everything if you want me to.
Yeah. We're going to go with the motion-
Yeah. We're going to go with the motion that is on the table, but we are open if you want to make any comments. This would be the time to do it.
Well, I think that, I don't think you're proceeding, with all due respect, correctly. That's the idea of a consent agenda, is everybody needs to consent to it. So I've told you I'm going to vote, maybe vote, I think in light of what Ms. Major said, I'm thinking of voting against one of the sets of minutes. So I don't want to belabor it. It's not that big a deal. So if you'd like for me to vote against the whole consent agenda, but it goes contrary to the whole idea of a consent agenda.
Ready for the roll call vote?
Vice Chair Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
No.
Mayor? Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Item seven is the Community Input Committee reports, which is, are in our board packet. Is there any discussion on this? There is no vote needed for this item. Okay. Thank you to the CIC for the work on meeting and on submitting these reports to us. They are helpful. Thank you. We are moving to item eight, which we have actually been briefed on in committee, but I have asked that this be pulled from the consent agenda because it is for a large amount of money, and I think people might be confused as to what it's for. So I asked Richard to present this. Thank you.
All right. So good afternoon. So today, I'm going to cover the procurement request for electrical PVC conduit. So this is, you can see a picture there on the right there. It is plastic PVC electrical piping. We use this in construction, and we pull our electrical cables through that. This supports subdivisions, all the new growth substations. When we're building substations, there's multiple conduits, sometimes 30 conduits within a duct bank, and we pull all kinds of electrical cables through those and communication cables. The contract, the current contract was valued for $60 million for a term of three years. Expires this October 2025. We are lowering the amount to 50 million for a term of three years. We did have six bidders on this. Five of them were local, two were small businesses, and we are recommending and awarding this to one local business, which is Annister. And as far as the pipe, we typically, over the three-year period, will install 7.5 million feet of pipe. So that's why it's a large amount. And I think that's all, oops. So I'll be seeking board approval for this procurement item.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. Yeah, that's, that's why I asked, because it is for piping, and it seems like a huge amount of money, but it is for a huge amount of piping.
Yes.
Do we have a motion on this item? Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have questions or discussion?
I do, I do have a question.
Vice Chair?
I know we've used this Annister.
Yes, sir.
Local. But we have five other locals, and for this large of a contract, why are we not having an opportunity to have other locals to be able to be a part of this since we had five people to bid on it? I don't understand it.
So the previous contract was awarded to one distributor, and distributor actually represents multiple vendors. Same thing here. So before, it was Wesco, and Wesco combined with Annister, so they combined. And so this distributor will represent multiple vendors.
Explain that, represent multiple vendors, like?
So different manufacturers that make pipe, so they go through multiple vendors, go through a distributor, because the vendors don't distribute, and so we're going through one distributor. And so we get economy of scales through different vendors.
Dr. Mackey, I think the-
One other question, just one minute. We have these five other individuals. They couldn't do the same thing? I mean, I don't know. I'm just asking a question.
So when we evaluated-
They use the multiple vendors.
Yeah. We also evaluated the cost, and so it will cost us more money by distributor.
You answered a question.
Yes.
Point being, Dr. Mackey, I think there are multiple local vendors that will get piped from behind the distributor who will bring it to us.
Yes. And then we look at the pricing.
Okay.
I've got some questions. So this is, it's basically cable for protecting electrical wiring.
It's the pipe that protects the cable, and yes. And a lot of times, it's concrete encased so that you can pull cables through it.
It's not exactly a commodity in terms of fungibility, but is it close?
It's a material item that we buy for-
No, no, but what I meant is, is one pipe comparable to another? Are you looking at the quality of the pipe?
Yes, sir. We have specs for all the various pipes, so we buy different hardness for different types of applications.
All right. And there were six respondents, but you're recommending, and Annister's the current supplier?
Wesco was the current supplier, but they-
Annister's new?
They combined with Wesco. They merged. They merged it a couple of years ago. And then they represent multiple bidders, so vendors. So there's a lot of suppliers that build this piping, and so when we make our orders, we'll look at the different bidders and purchase from the lowest bidder.
All right. So I've got Annister International. That's who we're dealing with.
Yeah, they have local offices here, yes.
And they're located in Illinois and have, and have-
They're Annister Inc. They're, I mean, I'll look at, I know their offices here off of 35.
So you really think they're a local?
They have local offices here, yes.
Right, but it's, but it's an organization, where's that?
It's a large company, but they have offices here.
Right.
They're local, so they count as local.
Okay, so, but it is, it is based in Illinois, 6,000 employees, so it's a pretty big company.
Yes, sir.
What, what, what size of an outfit do they have here?
They have two warehouse distributors here in town.
And how many employees?
I don't, I don't know on the employees, sir.
And, well, wouldn't, wouldn't you, you're declaring that they're local. Aren't there criteria for it being a local?
Yes, they have offices here.
Just, just to be clear, we have standards within our procurement policy that define local businesses, and they satisfy those qualifications.
Okay. And it looks like, just looking at it, that it's, it was $60 million for three years, and now it's going down to $50 million for three years?
Yeah.
Is the price really going down, or does that have something to do with the amount of the product, or what?
Both, both. So after COVID, everything slowed down, and so this was a period right after COVID, and now we're starting to ramp back up for new construction, yes.
Right. Most everything we see, we see the prices going up, so this stands out to see something going down?
Yes, sir. Some of it's going down.
And then, you don't, you don't, we're not able to show the evaluation criteria that we have in our books. Is that correct?
No.
And is that, is the public able to see that?
We don't post that information, no.
So that separate section in our book is just private for the board?
Yes, sir.
And again, you have 100, 100 points when you're doing the evaluation. And I guess what I'm looking, looking to do is try to get the best price for something like this? It's sort of this conduit or whatever?
Yes, sir, and that was the-
Why in your evaluation criteria is that only 30 out of 100 is cost?
Because this type of material, this is what we're, we're looking for. It's standard for this type of material, that we're looking at 30 for pricing, but of course, we weigh all those criteria for-
One of the criterias is legal and compliance requirements, and so what, what would, what would have to do with pipe if you're just trying to get the best price on it?
Yeah. I mean, I think a lot of it is also the contracts that we're using, that making sure that they're not taking exception to a lot of the contracts. So it's, it's built
Can I add?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, because I stepped away. So I think if I understood Mr. Steen, and I could be wrong, and I don't want to speak on his behalf. So again, the procurement item is not lowest technically acceptable. It is best value, meaning that we want qualified vendors to, one, apply. Two, no matter who it is, if I'm not mistaken, the materials are available on the market, which means that nine times out of 10 individuals are all going to the same bet at suppliers, and they're reselling the, the materials to CPS, no matter whether it's Company B or Company Z. So what we're looking at, and again, you can correct me. So it's like when I do cabling at the base. Everybody sells that cable, but I specifically have to find cable that's certified, that is not made in China, that is certified at a grade level, that meets the criteria of the National Department of Defense. So I can't just use any wire. So if I heard correctly, no matter who the prime is, no matter who the big company is, everybody's going to go most likely through the same suppliers of the wires. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, yes.
Correct?
Yes.
And then we're also are looking to, again, organizations with past performance, which means that they've done it in the past. We're not gonna, that's a non-negotiable. We're also looking for individuals, whether they're 8,000 employees here or 100 employees here, they have a local presence. Is that a fair statement?
That is correct.
Right. So again, this is again, a procurement item that is not looking for the cheapest, and a lot of it has to do with the grade type of wire cabling. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And there's a price discount, not necessarily because we don't acknowledge that prices are going up. It's just that we're no longer in the demand phase like we were during COVID.
That is correct, yes.
So I think that answers all my questions, so thank you.
Are there any more questions on this? Okay, there's a motion and a second on the table. Roll call vote, please, on item eight.
Vice Chair Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay, thank you. Item nine is not on the consent agenda because this has not gone through committee yet because it is a time-sensitive item. So Mr. Etheridge, please.
Good afternoon, trustees. I am here today to seeking approval to increase funding on some existing agreements we have in place, specifically our Millwright Maintenance Services. Millwrights are the people we look to to perform basic maintenance services around our major equipment. We've got five contracts in place today that we're using for our existing facilities. We've added the Corpus facilities to our fleet, and we've also incurred significant repair costs, unexpected repair costs, for our Summers Two unit to repair the turbine. As a result, we're seeking your approval to increase these contracts approximately $7 million to a total PO value of $15 million, leaving the term and the expiration date the same. Again, there's five awardees here. We anticipate when we go back to the market, the same group will be bidding again, so there's no shift there. At the end of the day, we just need additional funds available to cover the repair costs we're experiencing this year on the Summers units and to add in our new units as well. Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions?
Sure. My only comment is, I do have significant procurement experience, mainly because I am a business owner myself, and I know what it is to answer, respond to proposals. I want individuals out there to understand that I do vet every single item that goes through the committee. I do take my job very seriously, and I want to thank the, the staff because they know I ask a lot of questions. So I want, again, just make sure that individuals understand that procurement I take very seriously. And I do thank my colleagues who have questions because not everybody is as intimate as I am with that experience. But again, I want to thank again that we are transparent when we have big-ticket items, that we continue to bring them before the board of trustees. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Roll call vote, please, on item nine.
Vice Chair Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Okay, we are on item 10, Fiscal Year 26, Second Quarter Performance Update, with Mr. Kaczynski and Ms. Ball.
All right. Thank you, Chairwoman, and good afternoon, trustees. I am here this quarter, as we are in every other quarter, with Alana Ball, our Chief Strategy Officer. We will share this presentation. For reference, and as a reminder, the second quarter for CPS Energy is the months May through July of this year. So notably, the, the recent acquisition of the natural gas peaking assets are not included in the financial performance results for this quarter. They will be included, however, in the third quarter update, and we'll reiterate some of the points that Chairwoman Dr. Romero, you mentioned earlier in terms of the benefit for our customers. But we will address that in the third quarter in, in full. So given that, we'll move on to the, the next slides. I'll have the typical agenda items that I'll discuss before handing off to Alana Ball. On slide three here, it's a quick summary of the key highlights that we saw during those months. I'm actually going to read these bullets while putting up on the screen for the listeners the next slide, which is the graphical representation of those bullets. I just think it'll be helpful to hear and then look at it. In terms of non-fuel revenue, you know, we focus on that a lot. Our actual performance, which is in the blue bar, is slightly better than our plan. Couple of drivers there. Year-to-date, we've had some hotter-than-planned or colder-than-planned weather during the February, April, and May timeframes primarily, which pushed up presidential revenue a little bit, and we've seen some stronger-than-planned commercial industrial sales as well. So that's a good story on that end. When it comes to O&amp;M, in the middle column there, you'll note that our O&amp;M spend for the year-to-date is a little bit higher than planned. This is a few reasons. We had some unplanned outages, which you for us discussed, and Benny discussed one earlier. We've also had some storm-related emergency work, which is not atypical for us to have over the course of a given year, and some additional charges relative to gas leak pairs. So all in all, you'll see the delta's about 10 million over, and we'll keep an eye on that on a go-forward basis. And not included in that includes some repair work that's going on in the third quarter, so that may take an additional hit with regards to that. Moving on to capital, we have broken out between transmission capital and non-transmission. Our non-transmission capital is significantly underspent, same story as last quarter. We haven't closed on the two, extra 2% of the STP transaction. So when that closes, that's about $80 million. That will close the gap there. And on transmission capital, continues to be a lot of, a lot of movement there. We're a little bit overplanned. We anticipate, you know, the balance of the year, we'll see continued strength in spending with regard to that. But again, transmission business is regulated at the state level and different recovery methods than the, the other parts of our business. All in all, that's led to a net, net income in the far-right corner that's higher than planned at this point in the year. So moving on to the financial metrics guidance slide, this obviously looks familiar to, to all of us. Again, we have the ranges that we established at the beginning of this budget year identified. We, through the quarter two, not including the purchase of the assets we just purchased, you know, we are on plan with that. Back in the appendix, I believe it's slide 20, it has the specific, specific amounts for each one of these metrics identified that we were on track for as of Q2. And I will move on to the next slide here. That kind of wraps up the, the high points on the financial points. Accounts receivable are the next two slides. I know we've gone into depth, and Deanna Hardwick has presented previously a much more thorough and robust conversation. These two views here continue to be in my presentation because this is the questions that I get from the financial community and from the, the rating agencies. And, you know, just to bulletize the points that they see, obviously, they see that the peak has come down in a total dollar amount. 208 million was our peak in October of '22, and obviously, it's down now. As I've mentioned before previously, what does stand out is the risk profile, the mix of that outstanding past due balance. That perspective that the, the rating agencies have is that that has gone down in part because of the great effort by Deanna Hardwick's team, putting a lot more folks onto payment plans, which is reflected by the 47% on the far right, that blue part of the bar, are folks that are on plans. Now, that is 10% higher than the total balance as a percentage back at the peak and significantly higher than pre-COVID. And the other compelling number on there continues to be- And the other compelling number on there continues to be the the percentage of the dollar balance at risk of disconnections, noted at 30% of the the total outstanding balance as of July, down from the 41% that it made up at its peak and down from a 44% pre-COVID. So again, nominal dollars are large, but the the measure is relatively speaking, and that is a comparison point that I think is very helpful. Same concept when it looks at the customer count, and that's what this slide is that we're familiar with. Again, I'll just reiterate some of the points I've made in the past. On the far right, you know, as of July, about 82% of our customers in total were current, and that is, you know, obviously, higher than the high 70s that we saw back at the peak in in early '22 and through '22. But that 83% is pretty close to the 82% that was pre-COVID. So again, while we've been adding customers and nominally, our customer base is significantly higher than it was back in 2020, again, we look at this from a distribution perspective and the relative comparison. So again, I share this with you because these are the communication points that I share with the investor community, and I just wanted to reiterate those. The very last slide in here that I'll speak to before I kind of wrap up is just our bill comparisons. Again, you can see that our combined electric and gas residential bill continues to be awfully competitive, and the lowest of these these identified cities, major cities and some of the co-ops. So we obviously keep an eye on this, and this is a trailing 12-month view as of July. As I wrap up, you know, from a couple of themes, I do expect that we'll see continued pressure on the O and M side due to the unplanned outages that we spoke about, so we'll reflect that in in quarter three. And I do anticipate, hopefully, in the third quarter, we will close out that transaction on the additional 2%. And so you'll see another $80 million dollar transaction take place, but that'll come with more capacity, which will be great for our fleet. And then, as I mentioned, in quarter three, we'll provide a, you know, holistic view of how the recent acquisition kind of got ingested within our financials, but I will kind of reiterate that the the purchase was very positive for our community. It was a significant discount to building equivalent options, and as the Chairwoman, Dr. Romero, mentioned, it is consistent with both the technology profile that was in the board-approved generation plan from 2023 and is an improvement and consistent with the the financial metrics that were accompanied with that multi-year strategy. So I will pause there to allow Elena Ball to come up and take over.
I'm here to present the enterprise measure results. And so first up, we'll share where we are relative to our fiscal year 2026 enterprise scorecard. Overall, we are on track with all of the items that we've laid out for ourselves to accomplish underneath our Vision 2027 strategic plan for the year fiscal year 2026. There is one item that we are marking as at risk, and this has to do with EPC-related contracts, both for the Peker project as well as our Spruce II natural gas conversion project. It probably does not go without recognition from this board, but just for full transparency to the community, as we were pursuing potential acquisition of Peking Technologies, we were being being very thoughtful and deliberate about engineering procurement and construction projects, documents associated with build. So just very simply, we've acquired the capacity, the natural gas capacity, for the almost the equivalent Peker capacity that we have inside of our generation plan. As a result, we are not issuing those solicitation documents. The Spruce II natural gas conversion project, those documents, we did take it upon ourselves to conduct an additional external review of those documents prior to issuing them for a request for proposal, and are at this moment evaluating responses to that Spruce II natural gas conversion project. So we're marking them at risk. However, those were conscious, deliberate decisions that management made, given the conditions that we had our were facing and opportunities that were in front of us. From an enterprise measure perspective, looking along the bottom, we do have two measures that we have marked at risk. The first is our average customer outage duration. We have a target of just over 64 minutes based on our current measures and estimated end-of-year performance, assuming normalized weather. We are expecting that performance to come in closer to 71 minutes. And I'll describe, you know, the the matters that are underneath that and what's driving those additional duration, those additional, the additional time to to restore customers in just a moment. Additionally, safety performance, we have at 1.09. This is effectively our OSHA recordable rate. Currently, we're trending at 1.71, and again, I'll go into details around that in just a moment. The one metric that we have that we have indicated as unrecoverable is our plant availability metric for the summer, we we for our peak period, which includes our winter peak and our summer peak, we have a target of greater than 90.5%. You heard comments earlier from Mr. Etheridge, as well as Mr. Kaczynski, relative to performance matters that we encountered across the summer. Specifically, about a third of the unplanned outages came in the form of superheat, tube leaks on the Spruce II unit. And then we also had unplanned outages both at Summers One and Summers Two. Those are two very old power plants that are slated for retirement. One thing I did want to reiterate with regard to power plant availability, Corey showed on a prior slide that our net income is above plan. We had pretty moderate, and and I would say almost depressed, market conditions this summer from a pricing perspective. And quite honestly, you know, with having our plants out, you know, had we not acquired the Talon assets, the Corpus Christi and Laredo assets, and and had the the wholesale market operations team under Benny trade those assets forward, we would have had a a much different summer outcome from a revenue perspective. But the tremendous amount of work that has gone on on Benny's team to monetize those assets in forward markets has really muted revenue losses for us and has continued to support higher-than-expected net income position through through summer peak. So a lot of moving pieces in the comments that I just made, but would welcome your questions around around that, those items. On metrics, I will dive a little bit more into our outage duration. And so we have several drivers. Weather is part of it, but also I do want to highlight that we've made a deliberate decision to work more of our restoration work cold, effectively de-energizing work. For reference, last July, July 2024, about 4.5% of our SADI performance was due to de-energized work, where we made a conscious decision to de-energize a line in order to conduct repairs for for that work. This July, that number is is up to 7%. And so again, we've been continually looking at our practices relative to working energized work, and we've identified specific types of work where we feel that it's going to put our our people in a in a position of enhanced safety by working those those jobs de-energized. So that is certainly one of the the factors in our our trending up of outage duration. I touched on plant availability. Clearly, you know, the the Spruce II tube leaks are a key component. I will just let the board know, under Rudy's direction, we did bring in an expert to come in and and help us look at tube failure history, and we've just received preliminary information on that report, I think is going to be able to position us on that unit in a much more favorable reliability position moving forward prospectively.
Elena, talk a little bit about, you know, our plans to convert to natural gas should help with the the performance of these units as well.
Yeah, it will. Rudy's Rudy's spot on. So Spruce II is is our largest coal unit. It's a 785-magawatt coal unit. One might argue that boiler probably should have been designed supercritical versus subcritical, and that's just basically the operating pressure and temperature of the boiler. But coal coal operations on a boiler are just a lot more, they're just harsher, right? You're you're pulverizing material, you're combusting, you know, a solid product, and it's just, it's just a lot more intense on the metallurgy of of a boiler. So as we convert that unit to natural gas, that cleaner operation is also going to support much more controlled and and less damaging impact to that boiler. But we do have work that we need to do to address some of the reliability issues and do some replacements and enhance some metallurgy, as well as some burners and other matters around Spruce II. The Summers One and Two units, and you know, they had, they had some some kind of different issues, but they're not atypical for old units. We had one of the units that experienced the low-pressure section of the turbine. It had some cracking, and we're still looking at what that is. It's not uncommon for that to be associated with chlorides, but we're still looking into that. But it did require the turbine to be completely disassembled and shipped off for repairs. And so both Summers One and Two have struggled this summer, and it's really just a function of their age. And so with that, I will also just highlight safety performance. We've had a lot of musculos muscular skeletal injuries, just kind of people, you know, we're getting older, just like our plants, we're getting older. And so we're really focusing on what we're calling kind of being being better industrial athletes. We're stretching, looking at our ergonomics, really supporting our team members and and making sure that we're all physically capable of of doing our work. But I will say, in total, other than really our plant availability measure, we're having a successful year, and even with the lower-than-desired plant availability performance, the combination of having additional capacity and the terrific work that has gone on in our market operations teams to forward-sell and monetize those units have have ensured that we're having a successful year from a revenue perspective, which ultimately translates into affordable bills for our customers. And that concludes my remarks. I certainly would be happy to take any questions that you all have.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. I guess I'll start on the right-hand side. Mr. Steen, comments?
Mr. Kaczynski and Ms. Ball, thank you for your presentations, and always appreciate the conscientious work you do. Mr. Kaczynski, this is for you. At our at our special board meeting last month, you confirmed that CPS Energy's annual debt service is is north of half a billion dollars. And what's the figure today if you factor in the debt related to CPS Energy's recent purchase of the four natural gas power generating generator facilities from ProEnergy for around $1.4 billion?
Given the year, it would increase between 80 to 100 million.
So it it is it now 520? Is do I have that?
I'd have to check the exact number for you, but that's that's ballpark, correct.
It will go from 520 to what?
Around the 600s.
The 600s.
Yes, sir.
And then at the same meeting a month and a half ago, you indicated that CPS Energy's...
I pointed out, actually, the the asset two should also generate approximately $100 million of additional revenue per year net of fuel, so that'll be a lift to counter that, that one, that one number, by the way.
Right. At the same meeting a month and a half ago, you indicated that CPS Energy's total indebtedness is approaching $9 billion?
Approximately.
And and factoring in the ProEnergy debt, what's what CPS Energy's total indebtedness factoring that in?
The total purchase was $1.4 billion, which we're financing, you know, fully with debt, so that's going to be included. Our asset base will also go up by $1.4 billion as well.
The indebtedness will go up to to 10 and a half...
The purchase price, correct.
10 and a half billion?
Uh, yeah, a little less. And I can get an exact number for you as a follow-up.
Reviewing the minutes from our our September board meeting last year, that is on September 30th, 2024, I ask you to provide your trustees a chart showing total debt, starting with fiscal year 2020, 2015, and projecting through fiscal year 2029. And I respectfully ask our general counsel to consider this an action item. And I I don't believe I've been provided that chart.
Sir, I've responded to you numerous times on this, letting you know that we are not going to create a document at the request of a trustee, but have repeatedly provided you with all of the information that we repot, we provide to all of our rating agencies, which is a detailed profile of all of our debt, which has been provided to you each time you followed up with me.
Well, in the past, I've been told in public meetings in in an adamant way that I've been providing something, and I I'll admit, maybe I'm overlooking something, but I don't believe that I that, you know, that that I that I have been provided that.
I'm happy to...
And I don't know, why why is there reluctance on the part of the staff to provide something as easy as that? And you're saying to me as a trustee, you you go find out about it yourself? I mean, go back in the records?
No, sir. I think that's a misstatement of what I said. What I am not going to do is create a document. I do not want this to be perceived as a desire to not provide you information.
And I do believe we have...
What I do not want to do is create a document at your request.
I don't, okay, I'll move on, but I don't get that. It's a trustee asking for a very simple document.
So we we do have a document, I believe, that was sent several, several months ago that Shannon is probably referring to. So we'll make sure that that one's recirculated because that's the one I have in my in my brain, so.
And what is it, Mr. Kaczynski? What's the document?
It's just, it summarizes data we've already provided to the rating agencies.
I'm just looking for something that is simple, that just be a one page...
Yeah, it's a trend of the past 10 years, yeah.
Something like I'm asking for?
Yeah, I believe so.
All right, thank you.
And I believe it was sent out, and we'll get the the previous date we had communicated it.
Okay, then then please put up slide 18. Fiscal year 2026, year-to-date net income plan to actual walk forward. And Mr. Kaczynski, this is what you call your waterfall slide?
Yes, sir.
And the fourth, let's focus on the fourth column labeled net wholesale revenue at the bottom, and we can see the red rectangle representing negative, negative $23.6 million. And just a little bit of background, I'll remind our listeners that CPS Energy's fiscal year 2025 financial performance was considerably better than planned because of unexpected occurrences, chiefly higher wholesale revenues. I think I've got this right. Wholesale revenues of $281 million were made when CPS Energy sold excess electricity into the grid during periods of high demand. Importantly, that income doesn't come out of our customers' pockets, and I've heard you referred to this as your one-time lift in revenue. And some perspective that for the three years prior to fiscal year 2023, CPS Energy came in below forecasted wholesale revenues, which brought on financial stress. And the fluctuation of wholesale revenues present prevents us from relying on them. So with that as a preface and noting that the fourth column is red and shows a negative $23.6 million, I'd like your brief perspective on fiscal year 2026 wholesale revenues as of July 31st and then as of today. And are you concerned about coming in below your planned net wholesale revenues, as has happened in the not-too-distant past?
Well, I may share some of this answer with Elena because I know she mentioned it in her comments, and it was actually a shout-out to Mike Hill and his team within with Esmo on the good job that they have done in securing those long-term transactions at pretty favorable pricing. So I think in the four years I've been in this role, the very first year is where we came in underplanned, and that was about 20 million under plan for a plan that was $50 million net of fuel. I'll note this, 23 million, while it nominally, it's, you know, it is what it is, but our target this year was actually 337 million. So, you know, it's a much bigger bucket of money, and I think to the extent do I have concern, not at this moment, you've got a lot of other levers, as you can see on this chart that are green. And I think that, you know, the Esmo team has done a significant job in the face of a lot of challenges, both with plant outages and lower market pricing. So I think for now, it's, you know, continue to monitor and see how it fits into the broader financial picture. But Elena, I'll pause to see if there's anything else you want to add from a market perspective.
Sure.
Through July, we're close to about 200 million wholesale net revenue from the the activity, all of the in-total activities of plant, the plant activities, as well as market ops. And our year-end LE, latest estimates, 280 million. Of course, we're always working to maximize and improve that because those dollars ultimately directly flow to our customers' bills and buy down the cost of energy for our customers. And as Mr. Kaczynski shared, we're now the lowest combined electric and gas residential, combined residential bill in the state of Texas by over $20, with El Paso being next. And so a big portion of that is that very affordable energy that that combined efforts are really providing. But we we, you know, we certainly want to continue to improve that. High plant availability helps, but the terrific job of having capacity and marketing that into forward markets as opposed to writing solely on the on the real-time market has afforded us to lock in those revenues. There's more work to do, lots more work to do, but as Corey mentioned, it was not uncommon prior to initiating a strategy for our wholesale revenues to be sub 50 million, sometimes even sub 40, and now we're in excess of of 200 million consistently. We're working to continue to improve that, and the acquisition that we just closed this past week is going to provide us another toolset in order to effectuate improved net income, which benefits our customers directly and also benefits our city owner.
All right, thank you. Is that all you have, Mr. Kaczynski, on that? All right. Please put up slide three. That's entitled Financial Performance Summary. And the last bullet point reads since the October... point reads since the October 2022 peak, past due receivables have decreased overall by 51%. And I just want to stress that this statement is directed at the amount of past due dollars. And to keep the proper perspective about progress being made, please put up slide seven, which is entitled Accounts Receivable Current Versus Past Due Account. And I direct our listeners to the last column, which addresses the number of CPS Energy past due accounts as of July 2025. To boil it down, please note that the portion of our customers who are in arrears, or in another way to say it, past due 30 days or more is roughly 20%. And this is basically the same percentage as set forth in the first three columns. Thus, it's accurate to say, I believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that today that around 20% or 1 in 5 of our residential customers are in arrears or past due. So in regard to this ongoing and intractable problem, there's basically been no significant improvement, and I repeat, no significant improvement in the percentage or number of our customers in arrears over the past six years. It's around 20%, as I said, and as of July 31, 2025. If you look at that last column, if you it's it's presented in a way where you have to kind of dig this out, but add up the numbers in the blue, gray, and orange rectangles at the bottom, and the total is 173,000. So I'll just repeat, there are 173,000 CPS Energy's customers who are past due 30 days or more. Have I said anything wrong there, Kaczynski?
I think the only emphasis I would make is, I think you and I have differed on how we discuss it, while nominally that's correct, the reason I shared this is not to discount the individuals that are on that list, but to reflect the financial community's view of risk and kind of the aggregation of that. And so from a trend and a relative percentage basis, approximately 82% of our customers of the totality is current, and that risk profile is consistent with pre-COVID levels. It's not an opinion of right or wrong of the nominal number of customers. The other component that is different, that's not parsed out, is the blue component of that bar on the far right. That that 6% there is a number of customers that are active and engaging their plan. As a percentage of customers, that's double pre-COVID, and that reduces the risk profile. And that means that folks, you know, are engaged in a way that was very different. So I think both things are true. You know, the numbers are what they are, but I I share it from that vantage point, and that's the purpose of it.
Let me just add, I think what you're not, what you still continue to just overlook, you know, is that, you know, to drive whatever narrative you continue to push here, relative to our budget, write offs are less year over year over year because we're going after customers to put them on payment plans and help them get them back on track. So from a budget standpoint, we are performing better than plan because we're writing off less dollars. Corey, talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, so I flip back to slide 18 in the deck and the third column there that has 10.5 is to Rudy's point. So as we have seen the slide that showed the nominal dollar amount going down since October 22, the slope of that going down has been faster than we had forecasted. And that trend of of folks becoming current influences our future forecasts of bad debt expense. And what this chart says is the speed at which that has been paid back and folks have become current is faster than our plan. Thus, it is a lift to revenue, and that's how we reflected in the the third column. So that's probably the the complementary point that Rudy made in addition to the kind of the trends that the Ennis team has actually been talking about that they've been executing to.
Thank you. I just have a few more things here. Please put up slide 20. And we want to look at the row labeled debt capitalization. And then looking at the last column, we see that your latest estimate of where our debt capitalization ratio will be at the end of this fiscal year, that is, on January 31, 2026, is 64.7%. And what is that? What do you? What will that become when you when you when you take into account the recent 1.4 million dollar, 1.4 billion dollar pro energy purchase?
Yeah, so, you know, we'll have that in our full third quarter update. But it'll be over that number.
When you were when you were involved in the pro generally
Yeah, it'll be over that number. And it'll be, so I'll say two things on it. You know, and anyone can do the math on adding the 1.4 billion. It'll be closer to the 67 range. But the point I made earlier is that our generation plan was a multi-year plan. And I think that's probably what I'm going to stress going forward, is that our strategy was over 10 to 15 years. And that 67% or any number, sub 70, like I've said in the past, is consistent with the execution of that plan. So as the press release talks about, you know, we pulled forward an existing purchase. And so in this given year, if we come and exceed that 64.7, I would also put it in the context that in the with respect to the targets of the generation plan that this board approved, it's well within that that range. Further note, I would expect that the rating agencies and the financial community recognize the discount at which we bought fairly new assets nominally as a as a very large positive, rather than having to finance, you know, an additional 2 billion dollars over the next five or six years. So a few points, but I will put more color, as I mentioned, in the third quarter. Report out.
But 67% is your answer to that question?
That is my preliminary temporary answer. That is not part of my Q3 update.
And just a quick note, as I said, I've been on this board for 10 years. And until the last four years, there was an absolute consensus among management and trustees that this debt capitalization number should not exceed 60%. Let's put up slide 12. I'm almost through.
Can I point out the consensus component? We have done away with the consensus from a leadership team that 60 is the number. And we have communicated with the rating agencies and with this board that in order to execute that generation plan that we approved, the upper end of that target during this high end investment is going to be 70%. So for the sake of our planning and just on a go forward basis, which you're going to hear me often talk about is the 70% kind of ceiling that we're kind of working within. So just just for some context.
Good. Thank you. Let's put up slide 12 entitled Fiscal Year 2026 Enterprise Measure Results as of January 31, 2025. These are our eight enterprise metrics. The second one down, plant availability, has been deemed unrecoverable. That's the red box. And let's focus on the top enterprise measure that's designated at at risk, and that's the average customer outage duration. And that's what we're used to calling SADI, System Average Interruption Duration Index. It's measured by the calendar year. And of course, when one is tracking outage durations, the lower the number, the better. The color yellow warns us that it's at risk because the year in target in the third from the last box is 64.15, and the latest estimate is 71.58. And that's up from 65.86 three three months ago. And Ms. Ball, my question to you is, given that today that we're three fourths of the way through the calendar year, that's how this is measured, would you agree that realistically this metric is unrecoverable at this time? And then if you you think it is recoverable, what would have to happen to reduce it from 71.58 to 64.15 by December 31st?
I really appreciate the question. Thank you. And it's a it's a it's a very valid question. You know, I definitely think that, you know, being at this point in the year and trending above, you know, our almost 10% above our target, it will take, you know, considerable efforts to bring us back in alignment. I will I will highlight that we set this target before we made our our conscious and deliberate decision to work more of our work cold to enhance safety. And I believe earlier in the year, I may have indicated, I have indicated that to the board, that this was a change in practice that will likely pull at this metric. And it is. And so we're not going to back away from those decisions. In fact, we may actually adopt additional safety measures in our practices that might result in slightly longer outages for our customers. But we we espouse and believe in our team member and the public's safety above and beyond production. And and we are going to continue to support changes that enhance safety and de-risk work for the goodness of our of our team members, of our CPS Energy family members and their families. So I think that that is one that I would say we are not going to move away from, that is going to challenge this metric, weather is another. This metric is very much driven by the weather conditions that we experience as a as a as a utility and as a community. If we have a dry and moderate fall, then that certainly will enhance, you know, the performance of our system as we wouldn't would would not have as many weather related outages. We are, you know, we are continuing to do proactive work. We've trimmed 302 miles as of year to date with, you know, in our vegetation management program, we're continuing that effort. And we are continuing to be focused on grid automation, replacement of failing equipment, and enhancing our system to to further improve reliability. I know that this is a measure that is sort of sitting out there. You think about 64 minutes or 71 minutes. What does that mean? Effectively, it means on average, customers experience when they have an outage, it's a little more than an hour to get them back on. We do have a very large service territory. And so our we also emphasize the importance of driving safely to get to job sites. But when you look at this metric in other major metropolitan areas of Texas who experience similar weather conditions, Houston and Dallas areas are two and and at times three times longer than than our our service territory. And so we do enjoy very good numbers. We're very proud of our team members for the work that they do. But I will be straight with you to say, this is going to be a challenge to recover. I can't say it's unrecoverable, but I do think it's going to be a challenge, given the fact that we are intentionally de-energizing work to increase safety for our teams, as well as, you know, not being able to control the weather directly.
Thank you for that answer. And I'm, I'm, I'll just say, in closing, as we all know, CPS Energy is rapidly approaching management's next planned every two year base rate increase. And I believe it's scheduled for the beginning of next year, and that's just four months from now. And I've expressed over and over again, my ongoing concerns with the many costly acquisitions, projects, and programs CPS is committing itself to. And now, just since the board met last month, CPS Energy closed on the the Pro Energy purchase and increased our debt by 1.4 billion dollars. And I repeat, my apprehension is that we're on a perilous course and that we're borrowing too much and burdening burdening our customers too much. Thank you.
May I make one comment about the acquisition? Corey underscored it, but I wanted to just speak really mostly just to those listeners who might be hearing this. We did acquire 1,632 megawatts of of simple cycle peaking generation. We had over 1,700 megawatts of this technology in our generation plan. We acquired that capacity for 1.387 million, a billion dollars, excuse me. The equivalent cost to build that capacity in today's current dollars is about 3.5 billion. So we acquired this same capacity. These are new units. They've been built between the years 2020 and 2024, so one to four years old, very new, for less than, we saved over 2 billion dollars compared to new build. These assets are operating permitted and will benefit our customers here in the near term and for the long term. So net net, over the course of the transaction, the net present value to our customers resulted in an improved net present value of 890 million dollars. So it was a significant savings. Our leverage, should we have continued on the build path, which is the path we've been on, would have been much higher and bills would have gone up. Just inherently, more cost would have been passed to this community. So I just wanted to underscore those numbers.
Thank you. Vice Chair, questions, comments?
On slide seven, would you help us, or maybe just help me, if others already know, just refresh my memory, why we saw, and it's great that we saw 13,000 folks go, well, decreased by 13,000 by in January to February of those that were at the at risk of disconnection? Can you help me understand what happened around that time and how if we wanted to see a similar decrease in folks in that category, how we might do that?
Are you referring to when we started having that percentage drop off in January 24 and 25?
That's correct. Yeah. So, no, January 25 to February 25. There was a decrease there of 13K.
Oh, right. Yeah.
It's significant. So welcome understanding what happened around there.
Yes. And to be fair, the the biggest difference is near the end of the year and around holidays, we do slow down on the amount of disconnections and disconnection communications and collection communications that we have. And the beginning of the first of the year in January, we ramp back those communications up. And so typically, that's the the trend that we do see. Yes, Sam?
Trustee Gonzalez?
So, and again, I think this is for Corey. So Corey, again, the quarterly results look strong despite the the current discussions today. And you did already in one of those slides, I'm not sure what slide it is, but you do paint, you have, we have a slide with the where you have volatility, you have a couple of other items. What slide is that?
Volatility. Am I in the main deck or in the appendix?
I think it was the main deck, the waterfall.
Oh, the waterfall. Yeah, yeah, it's in the appendix. One moment.
So you reference volatility. So we have commodity volatility. I don't see any reference for supply chain or labor. So just based on the next 12 to 18 months, what could potentially erode our performance?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. What could potentially what?
Erode our performance.
Oh, yeah. I mean, there are headwinds that exist everywhere. I think anywhere, you know, there's a ton of macroeconomic headwinds that could could occur. I mean, any type of economic slowdown would be an impact on the revenue components, both locally and depending if it's statewide, you could see that impact just prices across the state if there's reduced economic activity. That's not necessarily new, but we're keeping an eye on that. And then obviously, on the expense side, supply chains are are what they are. And you've heard Lisa talk about it and the good work we've been doing. I think we took a lot of that risk off the table by not having to construct all the assets we just bought. So I think it's actually helping mitigate some of those headwinds on that side.
Other question. We talk a lot about debt, but we also don't talk about, again, our commitments to the community. So this is, and I don't know who can answer this one. But from a cash flow perspective, at least my concern is, how do outstanding receivables affect our ability to fund customer programs like STEP? Is there a point where delinquency could constrain program funding?
I mean, specific to STEP, which you'll have a presentation on here after after me. The recovery of that program is established through the discussion and the approval here at this board. And the recovery mechanism for that is is done through our fee adjustment. So it is the cash flow for that is identified for that progress. So it's it stands alone, and I think is not at risk, so to speak, in terms of those funding mechanisms, if that helps.
Okay, thank you. The last one. So as as we mentioned, you invested 1.3 billion in natural gas plant for reliability. And then I guess my question is, how do we again ensure that this decision doesn't come at the expense of growing distributed energy and community programs such as STEP? And so that would be my question. Again, my concern would again would be reliability and resiliency.
Thank you for the question. It's a really important question. You know, we are in a period of a tremendous amount of meteoric growth in the electric industry. And so as we think about our generation plan, we actually are in the midst of updating our generation plan from the the plan in 2023. Demand side savings and energy efficiency oftentimes are the most cost effective or some of the most cost effective forms of of energy, you know, in our stack. And so, you know, as we think about certain types of demand response, you know, depending on the program, that could be anywhere from $750 a KW up to, you know, 1,500 and plus. So as we start thinking about the 850 a KW that we just, you know, transacted on against, you know, rising supply chain costs, gas plants are now being built in excess of 2,000, those programs actually become more cost effective. And so I don't want to, I don't want to step in front of the authority of this board or the city council as we think about, you know, what what occurs with STEP Beyond Year Five, we're concluding year three, and you'll get a briefing here shortly. But we continue to see demand side savings as a key energy supply strategy, but also a key strategy for our customers. You know, we just recently had a census report that that showed that San Antonio is the third most impoverished large metropolitan community in the United States. And so it's really important as we we work to lift up this community and prosperity, that we work with our customers to help them drive energy demand out of out of their homes and businesses. And and then and then, you know, again, have the the stack benefit of not needing to generate that that energy, you know, and and raise assets against that demand. So going to continue to see STEP be an important, you know, component from an energy supply standpoint, but also more importantly, from a customer perspective.
Yeah. And let me just add, every megawatt we get that our customers install allows stretches our CPS Energy resources even further. So we have 500 megawatts of of distributed resources across our system that our customers have installed. And, you know, and that's basically, you know, the large scale power plant. plant. So the value of that helps us extend those resources, you know, where we can sell, you know, more on the market, you know, have more to to deal with growth, whatever, you know, we want to put that towards, you know. So so we're thinking about distributed resources as a, as Elena mentioned, as a, as a total part of our portfolio. It helps our, it helps make our resources that much more valuable when customers are installing their own generation.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of quick things. Can you just go over with the safety performance metric, how much is that actually influenced by a good thing, which is encouraging more reporting?
Yeah, that's a great question. In fact, in the month of July, we had four reports come in that were, that actually had occurred prior in the year. We like, we really emphasize timely reporting, but sometimes we we do have a little bit of delay. But we, we actually have been on a significant campaign to encourage reporting of near-misses as well as, you know, accidents or injuries or even, you know, events that may not result in immediate harm to someone. You know, I'm getting older. I'm actually one of these plants we're talking about that's ready for retirement, 50 years old. And so as I, you know, you know, simple things that we might do during the day may not cause an immediate action or problem, but a couple of days later, you might develop a sprain or a strain, and it could get worse. So our our people and culture team has been on a campaign really to to focus on not only reporting of of actual injuries, but also of near-misses and and events that could lead to an injury. And I'm really pleased to say, I think, I think our reporting has gone up considerably. And so that's a good thing. We're not driving for a number. Ultimately, we're driving to arrive at a place where we we can all go home accident-injury-free. But that takes knowing about conditions and knowing about what what's happening in the workplace, and reporting is a, is an important part of that. So I can't give you a number, but I can, I can guarantee you that, you know, where you just stepped back a few years ago, I think, we believe and we've heard stories of of times when people felt like, well, I'm going to miss the metrics, so I don't necessarily want to report this thing. That's not the culture that that Rudy is expecting of us, and that's not the culture that we're embodying as a, as a leadership team.
Okay, thank you. That just made me laugh when you can rattle off statements like coal is more intense than gas than the metallurgy of a boiler. I don't think you're going anywhere anytime soon, Elena. Also, and and I understand this, but I just want to make sure it's clear to the public that there is no connection between the plant availability metric and the SADI numbers, that they are completely independent of one another. It's not the plants are going offline and therefore people have longer outages. So if you can just clarify how they are not connected.
Yeah, thank you for the question. We, we operate a retail transmission and distribution system that provides electricity to our homes and businesses. Those are the poles and wires that take the electricity from the transmission system, which is a statewide system, to your homes and businesses. We generate, all of our plants generate and put power onto that big system. And so just because a power plant is offline here or somewhere else, that does not impact the the delivery of power to your homes and businesses. So they're completely separate. We effectively produce all of our our generation into the ERCOT market. But locally, we take our power off of that large system and step it down to our customers. And that, that, those poles and wires, our local management of the network, you know, and and striving to make sure that network is reliable and resilient, that's the piece that we see as customers, you know, of having high reliability in our homes and businesses.
Okay, thank you. And then just the last thing I was going to say, you know, Mr. Steen, you know, your point, I think, is important, you know, saying about how prior to the last four years, we had different financial metrics that we were comfortable with, but I was just thinking how that last four years is just this perfect time span for when we started getting this crush in demand and when we started really seeing the impact of the climate crisis. And and those things just align so well. To me, it makes sense that you have to be investing in more.
Yes. One, one more piece to that conversation that you all have hit on really well. And I think just as we're kind of wrapping all of that up in terms of why the recent acquisition was also important, I was particularly persuaded by the the things that are now able to come offline sooner, the things that are older, more expensive to maintain, and don't produce as much power, so those kilowatts per hour are more expensive to have. You're able to retire that early, which I think is is helpful, and I think we should consider in the overall costs and value of that acquisition.
And if I can underscore that, you know, for example, the summers won in two units that we talked about that have had the reliability challenges this summer, they're effectively the same efficiency as these units that we're purchasing. However, it takes them hours to start and hours to come offline, and it's, they're slow to move around, they use a lot of water, have a lot of emissions. These units we just purchased start in a few minutes, sub-10 minutes, they can come off sub-10 minutes, they move around quick, they need, use a lot less water, and they have a lot lower emissions. They also are sitting in the middle of a hydrogen network, so over time, we're going to look at potentially co-firing these units with hydrogen. There's about 1,600 miles of hydrogen lines in the state of Texas. Most of them are in and around these plants. Two of these plants have hydrogen lines within, less than half a mile. So we've got, we've got opportunities to even further drive emissions over time. But yeah, can't underscore the efficiency and the lower-cost operation of the, and the youth of these assets compared to some of the older plants that we have.
All right, thank you. Last call for comments.
I do have a comment. I don't want to politicize this, but I mean, for me, as a trustee supporting the last four years, it's not really about, I'm not going to deny there's not a climate concern, but at the same time, I mean, some of the things that we don't talk about is, again, are favorable rates in in the market. Like, again, doing the responsible thing, the right thing, we're able to borrow money at very, very, very low interest rate, which is something to consider. We also, again, were forced to make decisions when previous administrations of the Board of Trustees did not support making strategic investments, but made investments just to hold the line on not spending money. We were forced to have to invest. And I never want to be in a position as a trustee to be forced to make strategic investments in the community just because we don't want to spend. Sometimes you need to spend to gain. And I believe the past four years is an excellent example where we took a setback in the community due to weather, and we made some really good decisions. Not everybody at this table was in favor of them, but we're in a much stronger position. And now we have new realities that we have to address. New administration, but that is federal and state, and our responsibility always is to make decisions, at least for me. What's the best way that we can stretch the dollar? What's the best way that we can, again, invest when when markets are good and invest when there's a demand in our community, whether it's growth or poverty?
All right, thank you. Thank you both for the presentation. We are now on item 11, STEP update program year three. Is Mr. Tiareina here? Oh, he is there. Hello.
All right. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. Appreciate the opportunity to come back to you today to talk about our program year three update to the STEP, or better known as the Sustainable for Tomorrow Energy Plan. Going to start with laying some groundwork as to where we're at and why we're here. So two, three years ago, excuse me, we started on a new journey for a five-year, $350 million portfolio of programs, really focused around five broader goals. And those goals were around demand management, total bill savings, the reducing of barriers for program entrants, a focus on innovation, and then a focus on emission reduction. And we're working towards those five goals through various metrics. And I'm going to spend some time explaining those metrics, in particular for folks that may be listening for the first time. So the number-one metric right there is, you see, is the 410 megawatts of incremental demand reduction. This is the, the, the sole focus of reducing demand during our highest usage periods to ensure that we can do one of two things: defer future capital investments for the need for incremental generation, but also protect customers just from the continuous growth and the usage of the broader system. So what you'll see from a common theme as I speak throughout this afternoon is the the net benefits for our customers, regardless of participation, not only comes from the benefit from a generation standpoint, but it also hits from a transmission-distribution standpoint and then a total bill savings perspective. The next two are pretty straightforward from a metric standpoint, a 1% of energy savings. This is just taking the 410 megawatts and converting that to megawatt-hours to see the total reduction of our total consumption from a yearly basis. In this case, we're looking at the total five years to reduce that 1%. We've spent a lot of time over the last really decade and a half talking about our weatherization program, sometimes known as Casa Verde. We'll talk more about that as we go through the deck, but we had some pretty ambitious metrics around how many homes, and then a new program around multifamily weatherization that we're going to introduce. The fourth metric there, around the 665 million in lifetime of what it fuel and capacity costs, this is also known sometimes as a PACC score, which is the Program Administrative Cost Test. Another way of saying it, it's a fancy way of saying it, it's our ROI. For every dollar we're putting in, how much are we going to get back for that dollar of investment? When we created the program now three and a half years ago, leading to this, this version of it, we set a PACC score of 1.9. So that is just strictly taking the $350 million, multiplying that times 1.9, and setting the metric to achieve that savings in total for the, for the life of the five years. And then the last one, which is aligned with not only our, our local goals, but in particular the Climate Action Adaptation Plan, but this is a reduction around our broader use of carbon. As I go into the next slide, I want to focus on a lot of our communication outreach. This was, we received a lot of feedback as we were going through this approval process that we needed to find new ways to communicate with our customers. And we've done a couple of things. And so everything we're talking about today, we'll be looking at it from the full three years. So in particular, over 6 million different marketing campaign emails that have gone out to our customer base over the last three years, ranging from all programs, from demand-response programs to AC rebates, to wall installations, even to our commercial customers. In particular, pretty proud of the impressions number, so over 24 million different impressions. That's regardless if you choose to click on the link or not, these are customers that are seeing advertisement on some type of communication, usually through the internet, that are being at least asked to go and see our website, learn more about our programs, or to participate. And then on the actual website itself, we do track our analytics, over three, just over three-quarters of a million of folks that have clicked on our website, and you see the breakdown there between the residential and commercial side. In addition to this, over the last two years, over 80,000 targeted mail pieces to customers that we are, that we are specifically going after to participate in some program. And then in partnership with our community outreach team, I can't say this enough, along with our vendor and our partner vendors, over 8,000, almost 9,000 events over the last three years. And this is everything from our community fairs, to being responsive to elected official inquiries, to partnerships with other nonprofits. We're out there, and we really appreciate the partnership with, in particular with our community outreach team, which is led by KJ Federer, and all the good work that they do. All in all, roughly about 271,000 have attended those events over the last three years, and we continue to see good penetration and participation, or conversions, I should say, from, from those outreach events. Going to spend some time on this next slide. I'm going to work kind of like top-left to bottom-right, if you will. So maybe, maybe to say more bluntly, the program is being, is achieving good results. For it being now the completion of year three, we are more than 68% towards our megawatt goal reduction. At 280 megawatts, you're talking, that's equivalent to roughly, for every megawatt of homes, you know, during a summer peak, that's 250 homes, so roughly, let's say, that's about 500,000 homes already of peak demand that we're reducing because of our efforts. When you look at the ROI that I mentioned, or the PACC, the Program Administrative Cost Test, we're actually receiving $3.40 in equivalent value back for every dollar we put into our programs. Again, I mentioned the metric goal was 1.9. We're actually succeeding that with, or succeeding that with a 3.4 score. Now, that's not to say that each program receives the same results, right? There's a variation of the programs that have different scores, but we're managing the total portfolio, recognizing that we had the, the, the insight or the perspective of that we will offer variations of programs to make sure we're meeting as many of our customer needs, from our low-to-moderate income all the way up to customers that could participate in different types of programs. The other thing I want to highlight here is the, the 1.2 million energy-efficient measures purchased in the middle. This is the, better known as the Retail Program. This is where individuals in various locations around town are actually getting point-of-sale discounts on things like light bulbs, air purifiers, window AC units. In partnerships with a lot of our local partners, we're able to do that at the point-of-sale of transaction. And so those customers receive those, those benefits and that product instantly. And we're really, we're really proud of the fact that over a million people have taken advantage of that. And the last thing I'll notice that I'll note here is the 850,000 tons of avoided carbon emissions. This translates to roughly taking off 180,000 cars off the roads. And so again, as part of our commitment to the Climate Action, Climate Action Adaptation Plan, as well as our broader emission goals, this is all plays a, a place into it. The last thing I'll mention here, that's not on the slide, but I think it's worth noting, is all of this is, is verified and measured by a third-party partner. So Frontier Energy every year goes and validates our numbers, validates the performance, and then gives us the ability to submit a final report. That final report is available on our website, as well as the city's website through the Sustainability Office. That is usually done every quarter within an annual report that follows it up. Again, every program that we do is, is, is measured and verified by a third-party. And over the life of the program, roughly 92 cents of every dollar goes to a customer, with 8% going for administrative costs and marketing. So the good, good breakdown of percentages of the program, that's, that is further enhancing the benefit for our customers. So the next two slides are going to be a couple of different ways to look at participation over the last three years. This first one is a breakdown of participation by quadrant. You'll see here pretty even distribution amongst the four quadrants for our Board of Trustees. I will also note two things. These figures do not account for the power players' participants, and I'll talk a little bit more about that when I get to our demand-response program, but this is the gamification program that I'll, that I'll go into more details here shortly. So this does not account for those roughly 480, or I'm sorry, 384,000 customers that participate in that program. And this also does not account for the roughly 480,000 retail transactions that I talked about in each of those, those four quadrants to add up to the 1.2 million. So these, these, this participation is strictly our, our weatherization program, AC tune-ups, attic insulation rebates, and our commercial rebates. The next slide is, is another look at the same numbers, but now broken up by council district. Going to go ahead and just call out the, the obvious here. So District 5, we continue to make huge investments with our outreach efforts to both districts, actually, districts 1 through 5. The, the feedback was very clear to us that we needed to be more active in those communities, and we've done that. What we're, what we're seeing is that there still just is this gap around the broader participation levels, housing inventory, ability to, to, to participate in a program. Those continue to remain various barriers for that district in particular. And of note, of the 35,000 roughly residential Casa Verde or weatherized homes we've done over the course of the last decade, 20% of those homes are actually in District 5. So we're, we're starting at a different playing field, if you will, for lack of a better analogy, compared to some other districts. But we continue to remain focused in working with our, our trade organizations, with our community partners, to make sure that we're active in those areas. And in particular, District 5 will, will continue to be one of our focal points. So now I'm going to transition and talk a little bit about some new programs that we've introduced over the last three years, or that we will be introducing in the next couple of months here. Really excited about this one because we've done a lot of work to ensure that we could roll this out in a way that's going to make sense for our, our customers and our trade allies. Our new multifamily weatherization program. Prior to this, prior to 2022, we did not have any type of real programs for folks that were living in multifamily units, right? The STEP program was really focused on traditional, commercial, and industrial, as well as single-family homes. So over the last, really, at this point, six to nine months, we've, we've done a very thorough benchmarking, planning, and really turnkey service to ensure that we're going to be able to roll out a program that makes sense. And I'm happy to report that over that period, we weatherized 856 units. We've identified or registered eight new trade allies that are enrolled in this program. The trade allies are important because these are folks that have gone through our, our training programs, that have gone through our rules and regulations, and have basically acknowledged the fact that they're going to follow our process to ensure that they get their, their program back, or to participate in their program, I should say. You'll see there what the savings has looked like over, over those 850-plus units, and the demand is there. We're, we're actually sitting on about 5,000 units in the pipeline that we will quickly move into this process as we, as we now officially launch this program more thoroughly. Just something to note here that I think was really important, we, we worked both with trade organizations, contractors, as well as with the property management team to find the right balance of where we should each kind of have our own rules of engagement and how we would, should participate. Because we, we did share the common goal as to the, the net beneficiary has to be the resident living in the unit, right? It just can't go to the multifamily unit managing, the property management team, and then the customer not see those benefits. So again, we're, we're really excited about So again, we're really excited about this. We followed up with focus groups with individuals that went through the program. And again, we have outlined a good plan forward where we can begin to knocking down the 5,000 units in the pipeline. The next one as well, you know, we spent a lot of time over the last couple of years talking around the importance around demand response. Just like, you know, Elena mentioned previously, you know, STEP is a part of our generation plan, right? Energy efficiency and energy savings plays into the way we will plan for the future, regardless of the technology that may come to fruition. And with that, we saw the need to incorporate more programs into our demand response profile, right? So as a reminder, demand response in particular is really targeting summer peak performance. So those hours between 3:00 and 7:00 p.m. where we see the potential for the most usage of our system. By reducing our demand, basically our usage as a city during that period, we see benefits from system reliability, asset management, the need to not have to purchase or produce power in the market, or the ability to even sell that excess power in the market as well. What we've done over the last three years is we've implemented two new programs to both the commercial and residential program. In particular, on the commercial program, we implemented bonus hours. What we started to see was that even with meeting the peak demands of that 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. timeframe, we saw quickly that we now have a new challenge in front of us, which is that 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. timeframe. And the reason for that is, you know, you're seeing renewables kind of, they're transitioning, right? Solar is winding down because the solar is going down, and wind is ramping up. And we challenged ourselves to think of a way to create a program where customers can be responsive to us. And I'm happy to report that, you know, just last year, 15 megawatts came from that program. Again, multiplying that times 250 homes, you're roughly looking at, I should have done the math before, but 25, about 30,000 homes, I guess, that come off the usage there. We paid about 137,000 in incentives, and we have about 400 sites enrolled. And so again, these are customers that are participating in our current demand response programs, but now are offering us additional megawatts during that next period of time between 7:00 and 9:00 p.m. The other program that's out there is the My Battery Rewards. You know, we've talked about DG, that was a perfect segue from the previous presentation. Distributive generation absolutely plays into the future of our planning. There is not a future without it in my book. And so with that, we took advantage of customers who have already purchased or installed, in particular, battery storage systems at their homes. And we're actually working with them through our meter technology to send them signals day ahead through an e-blast where they basically shift their usage from their home to their battery during those high-peak days. So, you know, when our comms and customer team sends out Cam the Chameleon to be a yellow day, that's, you know, a second step to that is us communicating to these type of customer, letting them know that the next day, we need them to shift their usage. And if they do, we're rewarding them with an incentive. It's been a great program, a lot of lessons learned. We will continue to evolve this program, and we'll look for new ways to offer similar options or enhanced options over the next couple of years.
Jonathan, I want to just add, you know, in other markets, they're still struggling to get customers to adopt the thermostat program that we have here. We've got 150,000 customers in every part of our service territory that have smart thermostats that allow us to send them, you know, signals to move, you know, the AC up on days where we need it. And that is where the rubber meets the road with our successful residential participation and demand response. So, I mean, that's over 15%. Between 15% and 20% of our customers, which is phenomenal in any market.
Yeah, thanks for that, Rudy. I'm going to go a little deeper into that because I think this is a program that, quite honestly, we've been recognized at the national level for. So our total demand response program right now is roughly 250 megawatts of capacity. And so when you think of that from an asset standpoint or a generation standpoint, you're talking about multiple units of like a peaker that we have available to us that in partnership with our customers, help us to reduce that peak during those demand periods. And it's broken pretty much right down the middle. 45% of our megawatts come from residential customers, which primarily is the 150,000-plus thermostats. But another 55% or 138 megawatts come from our commercial customers. In addition to that, the Power Players program. This is the program that is 100% gamification. This is us sending an e-mail blast to the 380,000 customers that currently do not participate on the residential side on any type of demand response program. This is the one where, based off your performance, you get the follow-up communication that says how you rank. And goodness gracious, people love that thing. The amount of people that stop us and talk about that program, it's just great because it's a nice competitive way to reduce your usage. Believe it or not, we get about 18 megawatts from that program. And the investment from us is the ability just to send an e-blast or a communication. So great program, great participation by our customers here in San Antonio and our area. And again, all of this plays into that bigger role around energy efficiency and reduction. Really excited about this because, quite honestly, this has been something that's been in the back of our mind for quite some time, and we're happy to get it launched later this year in partnership with our vendors. A new pilot incubator. So right now, there are roughly 130 local businesses that participate in our STEP programs, right? From the commercial programs for lighting installations all the way down to our vendors that are doing things for like attic insulation, for example. Roughly 130 local installers that participate as trade allies throughout our entire program. Feedback we've received over the years is like, hey, you have a program, but have you thought about maybe this? Or what if we did this? And there really wasn't a platform for us to like customize or create a new offering. And so we've actually partnered where we're going to create this new incubator for that specifically. It's the idea to promote more innovation, promote new outside-of-the-box thinking for programs. And we will work them through this intake process to hopefully eventually launch some programs. So by the end of year five, I'm hopeful that we will be able to come back to you and show you some results of somebody who taught, who brought us an idea from innovation, and we took it all the way, or from ideation, excuse me, and we took it all the way to launch. This will launch later this year in Q4. And again, we're really excited about what the possibilities are here. So solar programs continue to be at the forefront of the conversations. We have somewhat taken a step back and are looking at solar a little differently than we did when we were in front of you three years ago, talking about the future of solar. It's really more around a program portfolio of options is the way we're thinking about this moving forward. And so there's two big umbrellas that are there that we've been talking about for some time that, quite honestly, we need to do better in getting to the execution side of it. The first one is this community solar around a subscription pilot. The feedback was very clear, our communications were very clear. We were going to try to create a solar program that ultimately reduced all of the financial barriers for a potential customer to participate. As we know, right, some of the biggest barriers around solar is the upfront capital cost to get the solar system installed, or do you even have the infrastructure in place to be able to install the solar? So we're looking at how do we create a subscription model where a customer doesn't necessarily own the asset, but they pay a subscription fee to participate in a program that in return will give them a credit to offset that subscription fee and still reduce their consumption usage? So again, this wouldn't be like, hey, I built a system on my home, and I maxed out the system, and I can reduce 80% of my usage patterns. It's really more in that target range of like, how do I help maybe reduce 10% or 15% of your usage? And imagine what that customer can now do with that savings because they're participating in this type of program. So there's been a lot of discussion here. Quite honestly, there is not many utilities, if any, doing the type of robust thinking on this particular program. There are subscription models, it's not new and innovative. But what we're being very strategic about is is that we want to make sure that we have the right regulatory approvals and that we have the right processes in place so that this pilot, ultimately, once it's launched, can be self-sustaining well into the future. The second one is, we are going to be going back to market to launch a new community solar RFP. This is more of the tried and true, as much as I hate saying that. These are the programs that we know we've done in the past, that we know can be successful. We want to give customers options that are wanting to buy solar but don't have the infrastructure or live in a multifamily unit, for example, where they don't own the roof. And so we'll be launching this solicitation later this year as well. And again, this would just be one of the two options within the portfolio. The third one is, we are currently exploring what the incentive program for a rooftop solar residential rebate would look like. Just for consistency, just to make sure we're all looking at the same things. On the commercial side, we do currently have a rebate program. That program was designed specifically for schools, nonprofits, and small to medium businesses. And quite honestly, that was based off the feedback we received from our community stakeholders and our partners to make sure that we had an option for our nonprofit schools and small business. So the criteria is 100 KW system and smaller, right? So the type of customer that, you know, potentially could participate in that program is different than if like, for example, CPS Energy, you know, just for comparison purposes. On the residential side, you know, we continue to see, it's a little bit of a mixed baggage, to be honest. You know, we still have seen over 10,000 installs over the last two years on the residential side. These are non-rebated programs, right? These are customers that are just willing to install solar on their own. But the facts are the facts. The incentives that were previously in place at a national level are going away. And we are looking at, you know, what if anything, you know, we potentially can do to continue to incentivize the promotion of that adoption. You know, I will always say this until I'm blue in the face. You know, CPS Energy from a utility side and from a DG side continues to be amongst the top three, four, or five in the entire nation. And we continue to be number one in Texas. So we want the adoption of these distributive generation resources, solar in particular. But we do have to find the right levers. Because, again, just for clarity, if we bring back this program, that means we are taking dollars away from a current program that is currently within the portfolio, right? There's not new incremental spend that I can add to these programs. We're working within the $70 million budget over those five years. And so something will have to be sacrificed in some capacity to bring back a rooftop incentive on the residential side. But we are exploring it, we do see potentially a need. But we are going to continue to talk to our stakeholders, both contractors as well as community stakeholders, to find out what the right approach is. In particular, as incentives go away towards the end of the calendar year. And then the last slide I'll just hit on is is our enhancements to our Casa Verde program. So we are on a path to transition and launch this enhancement here in October. We've had some challenges, right? You see it in the numbers that the weatherization number isn't quite as high as it probably could be. We are trying to find innovative ways to maintain the integrity of the program, which means a customer still does not pay for any of the cost upfront to ensure that they have a reputable and valid contractor that can go into their homes to do the energy-saving measures. We want to make sure that we can still measure, evaluate, and validate that the work has been done. And we want to ensure that we're still, you know, finding the customers that need this program in order to take that next step around their path towards energy efficiency. So we've, I mentioned earlier, the 130-plus trade ally contractors. We've been working with our existing weatherization contractors on what a transition could look like. And that ranges everything from the playbook to the spec sheet to the cost sheet. All of them who participate in this program know going into it that by them agreeing to participate with us in this program, it will be their responsibility to get the dollars, in essence, floated until we can rebate them, which is exactly what we do now. So from a customer experience standpoint and from a vendor experience, the only difference is that we're opening up the ability for more people to participate instead of being limited to just groups that have participated through some type of solicitation. So again, this gives now the residential customer the opportunity to vet two or three of those vendors that are on that list and pick the one that they're most comfortable with. Gives them optionality, gives them that reassurance that what they're talking to and what they're trying to achieve is real. And we still remain committed to the intake process, the communications, all of the customer experience that the team has done such a great job around the last decade and a half. All of that will remain intact. What we're really doing, though, is just giving more optionality, opening up additional folks that can contribute here at a local level. And we hope to see the net benefits from that. And so with that, I'll just close to say again, when we look at the full three years, the program is successful. We are, again, 68% towards our megawatt reduction goal. We'll continue to look for new innovative ways to partner with, through the incubator process, or even just hearing feedback from our customers. And we realize that this work never really finishes. So we'll continue to do our effort on outreach and communication. With that, I'll be open for questions. Thanks.
Madam Chair, I just want to level set, just to punctuate. The goal for this presentation was, you know, to tell you where we're at. If the board wants us to do something different or stop, then now would be the time to give us that feedback, which would require further action. And if not, we can have a conversation and we'll keep moving on. The program is authorized through the end of, we've got two more years, so the end of 2027, January 2028.
August of '27.
Excuse me?
August of '27.
August, okay, sorry.
Yeah, program year is a little different than calendar year.
August of '27. So we will keep doing what we're doing, you know, with a few tweaks that we've been talking about today through that time period, at which point the board would have to take action to extend the program beyond the five-year term. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate your enthusiasm on this, Jonathan. I just have one real quick question, so I'll get it out now. If you, when you are ready to make a recommendation about the solar incentives, the rooftop solar, you would come back to us? Especially when you said, you know, any money goes into that would have to come from something else.
Yeah.
Assuming you would brief us on that first.
Yeah, I think it'd be appropriate for us to go through the committees and brief you all and give you all the information. So similar to our other programs, we do manage that budget. And as long as we're not asking for incrementals, yeah, I don't see an issue or why we wouldn't want to have a conversation with you all.
Okay, good. All right. Mayor, any questions? Come in. Trusty Gonzalez.
There's a lot of questions I have, but I'm going to try to stay focused. So Frontier's evaluation showed residential solar I'm sorry, delivered higher system benefits than commercial solar. Yet I believe we're discussing potentially sunsetting the residential program while continuing commercial. My question would be, have we or wouldn't we reallocate dollars to more effective programs if the budget is fixed?
Yeah, I want to, so good question. I think it goes back to my comment a little earlier around we're managing the total portfolio, right? And so there are some programs that have better benefit than others. And actually, residential solar is actually one of them. The net benefit will gain you a higher PAC score, right? And the reasons for that are pretty clear. It's 100% reduction of energy usage because of that panel that's being installed. So I think if we remain true to the focus of what our initiative was when we were having this conversation back in the summer of '22, it was clear from our community and our stakeholders that they wanted to see programs that were going to target our low-to-moderate-income customers. They wanted to see creation of new technology. And quite honestly, it was a different time period, right? In '22, we were rebating many solar systems. I will say, the environment is changing, you know, in the current state. So we remain committed to always validate all of our programs and make decisions or recommendations where we can move dollars from a certain program because at the benefit of another program. That is not uncommon, so please don't take my talking point as something that's negative. We do this quite oftenly. The significance is that we want to make sure whatever we do, that the program still yields the value for our customers so that we gain additional participation and not just incentivize customers that we're going to participate anyway.
I do have a couple of other questions. So it was presented in the data, and again, I believe District Eight. If you can go back to that slide. So again, Districts Eight, Nine, well, Nine, for example. I mean, obviously a lot of adoption, so if you can refresh my memory. So participating in the solar program is not income-based. Anybody can do it.
Yeah, so to be, two answers, that's correct. Second part is, there is no residential solar rebates in these numbers.
Okay, that was my next question. How much of it was commercial versus residential?
Yeah, actually, I do have some solar stats that I can share. So on the solar-
And the reason why I ask this question is because, of course, District Four. Again, I live in Five, and then District Four shows really good numbers. But when you look at socioeconomic, usually we associate Two, Four, and Five, low-income areas. So that's why I had that question.
Yeah, no, it's a fair question. So over the last three years, for residential non-rebated customers, so these are folks that have installed solar without taking advantage of any program or the sunset of the program that we had in '22, total installs the last three years is 10,036. And of that, our number-one district over those three years is actually D4. Just over 800 installs. Districts Two, Four, and Ten have taken the most advantage from a ranking standpoint. So there's still the, there still is the adoption- So there's still the, there still is the adoption of solar happening without an incentive currently in place.
Was that the question you were asking, or was it broader about all of the STEP programs?
No, no, I think that was specific to what I was asking. I just wanted to make sure, and I think it would help maybe in the futures we're considering, as you mentioned earlier, no decisions have been made, this is more of a conversation. If we could break it down by district and income levels, I think, again, commercial versus non-commercial, I think, would be important just to distinguish because it could be misleading to the community or just, because I was asked specific questions about District 4, so I just thought that was important. And then my other question would be, have you ever heard of the Defense Economic Adjustment Assistance Grant?
No.
There's a program right now, and the reason why I bring it up, as we're trying to figure out, you know, I've always liked, how can we innovate? Where can we identify, you Grundy, Grandy, grantin' funding sources? As you know, I grew up with Kelly, so that's a perfect example of maybe this could be utilized, you know? Specifically what it does, like, for example, Fort Cavazos was able to use that funding source to build a 15-megawatt solar array with 3-megawatt battery and a microgrid that could operate like for 14 days. So my question would be, could you please look into that?
Okay.
And I understand we get good borrowing rates, but this is, again, money that exists, and I think it would be a great opportunity, especially like, again, this could potentially benefit District 4 and 5, but even around joint base. So again, I kind of look at, how can we be creative? I'm all about trying to figure out, how do we do job creation? How do we leverage our investments today? How can we identify different funding sources? And then, again, innovation, throw in, sprinkle a little bit of battery, throw in microgrid, how can we potentially use it for community solar in District 5? Because I know, I mean, I live there, you have primarily resident, you have rentals, you have apartments, you have, again, housing programs. Can we get creative with like open opportunity? I believe they rebranded recently. How do we get creative? Because I already know, for a few of those homes, they drastically need infrastructure support, right? So again, in a nutshell, I would like you to kind of explore that. I can send that information to you. This is a great, again, partnership with their military, potentially to come up with something innovative and still try to figure out how we can maybe leverage, again, community solar, microgrid, battery, storage opportunities, so.
Absolutely.
And, yeah, again, again, to consider, if we can increase the budget, can we find different funding mechanisms to increase that $750 million budget? So those, I think, are my initial questions only. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Trustee Steen.
Okay, Mr. Tiarina, appreciate your presentation and all your worthwhile efforts for CPS Energy, and you know that you're an invaluable member of our executive team. If we could put up Slide 3 on the screen. As most of you know, I'm not a fan of STEP. It's a clear example of spending money, a whole lot of money, when it's not necessary. Now, for those who may think I reflexively oppose all major expenditures, that's not the case. For example, I believe it's essential to replace our ERS system, and that's the complex software arrangement used to manage day-to-day activities such as accounting, procurement, project management, risk management, compliance, supply chain operations, and so forth. It's a quarter of a century old, and our vendor has told us it'll cease supporting it in 2027, so I concur that we must complete this ER transition, ERS transition at a cost of around $304 million. On the other hand, there's the STEP program. In May of 2022, CPS Energy had the opportunity to lessen financial pressure on itself and its customers by, at a minimum, pausing the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Initiative called STEP, which was established as a 10-year program, and that predated my service on the board, and that the staff had declared had reached its original goals. Because this STEP charge, or what some have dubbed the STEP tax, represented an average of 3% to 4.5% of a customer's monthly bill, suspending the program would have, for many customers, essentially offset the 3.85% base rate increase implemented March 1, 2022. And granted, there would have been a time lag, but this would have happened. Nonetheless, it was decided to forge ahead with the continuation of STEP, notwithstanding that I, as well as a plurality of the Rate Advisory Committee and three city council members favored a pause. But in regard to Slide 3, which is up there, it's entitled "Goals and Metrics," and focusing on the blue rectangle at the bottom of page, note that the cost of extending the program was and is pegged at $70 million a year for five years, or $350 million. Now, this is on top of the $800 million CPS Energy had already spent on the program. So incredibly, by the end of this fiscal year, on January 31, 2026, CPS Energy will have spent over $1 billion, over $1 billion on STEP. And thinking as a businessperson, had our company invested $1 billion in a power plant instead of STEP, today we'd have a generating unit as an asset on our books, an asset with a long life capable of producing substantial revenue. I'll remind everyone that in the recent past, one of San Antonio's business legends said on this board, he consistently and strongly criticized the STEP program as a misuse of money. He liked to say that the best thing we can do for the City of San Antonio and our customers is run CPS Energy like a business, like the business that it is, and he never heard of a business that paid its customers not to use its product. Today, I'll not delve into various program steps it has offered over the years. Well, maybe one example. I believe it's been shut down, but for many years, STEP subsidized homeowners' swimming pool equipment. Is that correct?
That was correct.
Okay.
It was the pool pump, if they converted to electric.
So on May 23, 2022, when this board voted on a five-year extension of STEP, it was part of both the discussion as well as the actual motion, thanks to Dr. Mackey, that there be a three-year check to evaluate the program. With all due respect to the staff, the presentation today merely skims the surface and is not intended to generate any spirited discussion of the efficacy or merits of a program that's costing this company $70 million a year. I believe it should have been agendized as a discussion and a vote. Instead, we've received a check-the-box type of presentation. Remember, just last meeting, that since just our last meeting with the ProEnergy deal, we've added $1.4 billion to CPS Energy's indebtedness. Today, we could have paused STEP or better yet canceled it and saved CPS Energy $140 million. So I'm disappointed at how this has been handled, and Mr. Tiarina, you did an excellent job, and please know this complaint is not specifically directed to you as Vice President of Corporate Development. And Ms. Ramirez, since we're not voting on this agenda item, I respectfully request that you note in the minutes of today's meeting, my ongoing opposition to the 2022 extension of STEP and the accompanying $350 million price tag for doing so, and thank you. That's all I have at this time.
I appreciate the feedback, Mr. Steen. I think just maybe two things to make sure that our listeners have, you know, as much clarity as well is, I do want to focus on the PAC score in particular. So just for consistency of transparency, our programs currently are netting value back to our residential and commercial customers to the tune of $3.40 for every dollar that's going into this program. So I would rebut a little bit around the value proposition for what it is in our community. And on the flip side to that, right, there was also an abundance of majority that have voted for us to continue this. So, you know, as Rudy mentioned, we are here for the check-in today of a five-year program. If we get signal to go in a different direction, we will start that path forward, but we are authorized for this five years, and our goal is to achieve those five years with the metrics that were identified and approved by the board.
Vice Chair, any questions, comments? All right, last call for comments. This was a discussion item.
I have a comment. I've heard that STEP describes as a seven, what did he say, $7 million a year loss? But from a business perspective, that's too narrow, in my opinion, of a view. A disciplined company doesn't just look at expense lines, it looks at avoided costs, reduced risk, and opportunities to leverage outside capital. That's exactly what STEP delivers. Every kilowatt we save through weatherization or solar is fueled. We don't have to buy generation, we don't have to build, or again, we don't have to chase from customers who can't keep their bills. So again, to me, I don't see this program as charity, it's risk management. It lowers bills and keeps families current. Community solar isn't a handout, it's a way to potentially expand participation to renters and multifamily households who are otherwise locked out of the market. These are tools to stabilize revenue and risk, reduce systems risk, and that's business discipline. It is not a handout. And then furthermore, if we look to alternative funding sources such as Defense Economic Adjustment Assistance Grant into solar or storage microgrid, that improves both readiness and community resiliency. With joint basehead into in your backyard, and we call ourselves Military USA, we can do both bridging in state dollars to expand resiliency without cutting other programs inside the 750 million STEP gap. So yes, STEP costs money, but in true business case, that also saves us more in avoided costs, protects customer base, and positions CPS to bring in outside funding if used wisely. That is not a loss, that's a long-term value creation and risk management, and that's how we should measure STEP moving forward.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Yes, please. I think I see both sides of this. I think there is value in maybe a tighter connection between the point Mr. Steen is making, though, so that we might understand how we are seeing, in fact, changes in our account deliverables that are past due or the current status of some of these accounts, and how we are investing in the STEP program. I mean, right, I think we're kind of talking about it in theory, but if we had a tighter linkage between the investments and steps and how we're actually seeing, you know, definitive changes in this charts, or how, in fact, those numbers are targeting our outreach efforts, that, I think, gets us closer to where we are looking at for a tighter rate of return.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. All right, we will move to Item 12. I just wanted to introduce this. This kind of came up because, or getting it on the agenda came up, because at a CIC meeting, and thank you all for still being here and being so patient with us today, at a CIC meeting in the summer, this, the topic of the mobile generators did come up among the CIC members, and they were also saying they were hearing it from people in their communities. So I got myself on a tour of the mobile generators, thank you, on possibly the hottest day of the summer, but maybe not. So I learned a lot about it, and so I thought it would be really helpful for the community to get this review of what is going on here. So thank you, Richard.
All right, so good afternoon. So today, I'm going to give you an ERCOT mobile generator update. And so on the agenda, I'm going to cover the background, I'll cover the scope, and then a communication plan. So just as a refresher on the background, you know, back in March of '24, CPS Energy notified ERCOT that we were going to retire Bronics 1, 2, and 3. And so ERCOT started doing studies on system impacts if those units weren't available. And so as ERCOT did their studies, they noticed that it does create a reliability risk on the grid. So what ERCOT does after that is they start looking for solutions, and you'll see the temporary solution and their permanent solution. So the temporary solution is, they have the ability to RMR a power plant, and so if you're closing the plant, they can say, hey, you need to keep this open because it's a reliability must-run. So ERCOT looked at Bronics 1, 2, and 3 and determined, hey, how much is this going to cost to revamp them, get them back working until we come up with the permanent solution? So ERCOT looked at also alternatives, you know, is there any alternatives that they can deploy instead of RMRing all the Bronic units? So the solution they came up with is, they did RMR Bronic 3, which is a 400-megawatt unit, so they were looking for an alternative solution for the other 400 megawatts, which is Bronic 1 and 2. And so the solution they came up with is these mobile generators. So there's 15 mobile generators that ERCOT initiated a contract with, the contractor's LifeCycle Power, and then they're pushing, they're moving them down to San Antonio. The permanent fix is there's a lot of transmission upgrades going south, and so we have our Howard to San Miguel, which is all brand-new facilities going south. Then ERCOT also identified the Spruce to Pawnee to Tango line, which is an existing line, and that's the critical line that everybody's watching today. And so when that line overloads, ERCOT will issue notices, energy action notices, and could also deploy rolling outages just because of that line. So the permanent solution is to upgrade that line to a double circuit. Of course, since this is a critical line, this is the one that you all approved, the contract a couple of board meetings ago. This line needs to be rebuilt, energized, which is different for us, because normally we take the line out, then we rebuild it. So it's a currently, it's a one-circuit line, we're going to rebuild it to a two-circuit line and increase the capacity on that. ERCOT did ask to accelerate that project, so it's going to cost more money to get this done. Initially, that line was sent to us to rebuild by 2029. ERCOT saw all these issues and said, hey, how fast can you rebuild it? Our teams did a great job getting contracts out so that we can bid it. The first circuit will be energized next year, September 26, and the second circuit will be energized by the end of the year, next year. So that's extremely fast. As far as the generators, you can see a picture there on the bottom right, they are kind of massive, they come, they are mobile, so the, you know, they're on a skidster that you can move them around, but once you move them, they're there for a while. They will be here for two years or until that project is, as ERCOT deems, they're not necessary. So currently, we have 15 generators at nine substation sites. Of course, the generators are owned by LifeCycle Power, so ERCOT has a contract with LifeCycle Power. So we do not own or maintain those generators, we are just facilitating the interconnect process. And so I shout out to our, all our substation teams and engineering teams did a tremendous job studying these, making sure that we can connect these in a timely manner. To date, out of the 15, two of them are commissioned, so ERCOT can call on those. There's six that are almost complete, so ERCOT has to give them final approval to be able to dispatch them, and then the remaining are all being tested right now. So all of them should be installed by the end of October. And then, of course, the, our cost for the interconnect process is $23 million, and ERCOT is reimbursing us for that. As far as communications, we did do outreach as far as letters and emails, so if you are near a substation site that has these generators within a mile radius, we sent letters out or emails, depending on your preference. So we sent out 20,000 letters in Spanish and English and 14,000 emails to all the residents in this area. And then we also did government outreach to Districts 2, 3, 4, and 10, and also the county commissioner in this area. And I think that's all I had for the presentation.
Okay. Questions, comments? Trustee Steen? Vice Chair?
Thank you. I thought we had, and I know you had helped me when Councilwoman Villagrán had reached out initially, so thank you for that, because I know we worked on that together. So a quick question, did you mention about emergencies, how the organization typically internally has meetings, and then depending on what they determine might potentially be a severe weather alert, they usually will communicate to us?
Yeah, so under extreme conditions, ERCOT's monitoring the grid, and if there is, if they're seeing issues on that line, going to the Spruce to Pawnee line, it will go through the alert process, and then ERCOT will notify us as the queasy, as the scheduling entity, and then we automatically notify LifeCycle Power, and then they'll turn on the generator. So they are only being used for emergency conditions. ERCOT does monthly reliability reports, and they look at the probability of these being called. It's always, it's been less than a 1% chance of them being utilized, but in the event, the other option is to shed load, which means rolling outages for all customers. And so this is a solution until we rebuild that line.
Thank you, Richard.
Mayor, any questions? All right, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we are on Item 13. This is for the CIC New Candidate Approval for New Members for the Board, Ms. Kathy Garcia.
Good afternoon. I'm here before you today to present three nominees for appointment to the Committee, Community Input Committee, or what we call the CIC. In doing so, I'll provide a brief overview of the CIC, highlight each of the three nominees, and request the board's approval of these recommended candidates. So as a reminder for those that are watching- So as a reminder for those that are watching this meeting, the CIC is an advisory body, and it is intended to provide input on, and communicate views of the community, and to provide input on key utility initiatives to the board and to management. This is a board-created committee, and it is comprised of 19 members. One from each of the 10 city council districts, four from each of our Board of Trustees quadrants, and then five at-large members. All committee nominations are subject to board approval. Members may serve up to three two-year terms for a total of six years. And today, we're bringing forward three nominees from city council districts 2, 6, and 8. Let me now briefly introduce, I believe there are a couple of them here, so I'll go ahead and introduce them. I'll ask them to stand as I call their name. I know that we lost Diana, but she had to go to another commitment. But District 2, interim council member Leo Castillo Anguiano, who is temporarily serving for council member Jalen McKee Rodriguez, brings forward Diana Lopez. Diana is a longtime community organizer with the Southwest Workers Union and has served as executive director of Centro por la Justicia since 2014. She has worked extensively on environmental justice matters. Next, District 6, council member Rick Galván is nominating Lawson Picasso. You heard from Lawson earlier. Lawson has been a District 2 appointee that now resides in District 6. As you know, Lawson is the current CIC chair, and if approved today, she will be in her fourth year of service on the committee. And then Michael, oops, I need to go back. Michael, council member Evalis Mesa Gonzalez for District 8, is nominating Michael Kinnick. Michael is an electrical engineer with an extensive working background, including working for the United States Air Force for over 26 years. He has a master's degree in public administration and a master of science degree in electrical engineering. He's also a former of the CPS Energy Rate Advisory Committee, former member of that, of the RAC. And this seat, as previously mentioned by our chair, was previously held by John Kelly, who has been appointed by council member Gonzalez to another board which created this vacancy, and I believe he's still here. So again, a thank you to him. So at this time, we're requesting the board's approval of the recommended nominees to the Community Input Committee.
Thank you, Kathy. Before I open it up, we can go two ways here. We can have one motion for all three. We can have separate motions, one at a time, and that's up to whoever makes the motion. And we are now open for a motion.
My motion will approve all three. Ms. Diana Lopez, Lawson Picasso, and Michael.
We have a motion and a second to approve all three of these nominees. Is there any discussion or questions on this?
Is Ms. Picasso here?
Yes, she is. I believe she's still here.
And if you all could put up slide four. Ms. Picasso, thank you for speaking to us earlier. So I'm looking at, and I know these are bullet points, but I see your second bullet point says Communications and Public Involvement Coordinator for WSP, but as if you were still doing that, but can I clarify, you're not doing that anymore?
Thank you so much for bringing this up. In fact, I had just spoken to a few of my liaisons earlier. That needed to be updated, so no, I am not there anymore.
Right. And you know, the concern I had is that, and I think this is right, is WSP has had some contracts with CPS Energy.
Sorry, that wouldn't prohibit her from serving on the CIC.
Well, so that brings up another interesting question, but it'd be something we'd want to know. But that's all I wanted to know. Thank you for speaking to us today.
I mean, it would help for those of us who don't know what WSP would be.
It's a multinational engineering and design firm.
Not sure it's relevant anymore if she's not with them.
I just thought I'd ask.
So there's no, there are no conflict of interest provisions related to the CIC?
They're not approving contracts, or so there wouldn't be a conflict of interest.
Right, but they could, they could be on a working group, which, and they could learn confidential information.
Each member of the CIC signs a conflict of interest form and policy. They disclose, if they have any conflicts and we evaluate those, they also sign non-disclosure agreements. But to be very clear, every person in our service territory works largely for a company in our service territory, so it's very hard to find someone that doesn't have some tangential relationship between a vendor or a partner and everyone a customer. So we evaluate those, and it does not automatically disqualify you from service on the CIC or frankly, on this Board of Trustees.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions?
I did earlier, there was a lady who spoke on behalf of another individual who I don't believe she made the cutoff, if I'm not mistaken.
I believe that the individuals that spoke-
Oh, she did. Okay. I just wanted to- Was supporting Diana. And then I just, the other question I had, none of these would be trustee nominees. These are all council-appointed, because I know how we have four.
Right, these are council-appointed.
Thank you for clarifying.
Anybody else? Questions, comments? All right, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Ms. Lopez, Ms. Picasso, Mr. Kinnick, congratulations, and we look forward to your work. All right, item 14, we continue with the CIC now on the bylaws approval revisions, and I will remind the board that the redlined version of the bylaws changes is in your packet.
So I'm also here today to share the process. The Community Input Committee, or CIC, followed in reviewing its bylaws and to present their proposed amendments for the board's consideration. The CIC, with direction and guidance from you, initiated a review of its bylaws to ensure that the committee is operating efficiently and effectively, and to clarify areas of ambiguity. It's important to note that these changes originate from the committee itself and not from staff. These are recommendations developed through the committee's discussions. So the CIC began discussing their bylaws at the beginning of the year, and this slide shows a timeline along with steps taken. Much of the discussion and this review was prompted by request to look at how the committee was functioning after a year of operating in its new form, and specifically its subcommittees. A little bit of background and context. While not required by law, the full CIC meetings are open, allow for public input, are livestreamed, and agendas, video recordings, and meeting summaries are posted on the CIC website. The subcommittees are smaller groups, there is no quorum, and they have not been open to the public. Agendas and post-meeting summaries for both the full CIC meetings and the subcommittees are posted online. All post-meeting summaries are provided to the board as part of the board packet, and that board packet is also posted online. So just a bit about the process. The Executive Committee, acting as the bylaws review committee, was charged with collecting suggested changes. Each CIC member had an opportunity to submit conceptual changes or actual edits. This was discussed in CIC meetings and set forth in an email from the chair to committee members leading up to the July meetings. The bylaws review committee reviewed all submissions to decide which items to advance. Those selected revisions were then submitted to our legal department, which incorporated the concepts into a redline version of the bylaws. The redline version was then shared with all CIC members to make sure that the redlines accurately captured the committee's intent, and then they were posted on the CIC website in advance of the committee's full meeting on August 13. During that meeting, the committee discussed each change, and they voted 12 to 1 to adopt the revisions collectively. Now to highlight some of the changes and clarifications that they made. The submissions that were received generally fell into the following categories: the role, name, and structure of the subcommittees; the meeting cadence of the full CIC meetings; and member expectations and duties. Key changes proposed by the CIC include renaming the subcommittees as working groups, adding language to maintain that these are not open meetings, and specifying that no formal action may be taken during working group meetings. To address external concerns that rate case decisions could be made at a subcommittee level, the CIC renamed the Rates, Finance, and Business Subcommittee to the Finance and Business Working Group, omitting rates from the title. Any rate case information will be brought to the full committee in an open meeting. The subcommittees, or now working groups, oops, are, will continue to be envisioned as a space for preliminary conversations, where early-stage ideas can be brainstormed. Meeting agendas and summaries will continue to be posted online. Other changes include increasing the number of times per year that the full committee will meet, and that a member of the Board of Trustees may serve as a liaison to assist the CIC in furthering its work. One additional edit was made under the purview of the board to clarify the role of the executive committee. The full redline version of the bylaws are in your board packet, and as part of this board meeting and the board packet, were also posted on the website. So these changes are now before you for your consideration. Should you approve them, this slide reflects the actions that will be taken following that vote, and I'm happy to answer any questions or provide additional context where possible.
I'm going to approve the Community Input Committee bylaws.
I have a motion and a second to approve the changes to the CIC bylaws. Do we have any questions or comments? Mr. Steen?
Thank you. That was very well done, Ms. Garcia. Is Ms. Picasso still here? So you got cut off at two minutes. You were starting to express some views on these bylaw changes. Do you mind continuing?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, truly, it's been a robust conversation that we've had as a big, as a majority of it. I am just one person representing a lot of the feedback that I received from my committee members. I'm very proud of the feedback that we looked at. Me and some of my executive committee members that are here today, we spent, gosh, I think it was over two, three hours in the war room here at HQ, going through every single comment that was provided to us. And with that, we came together and we provided the proposed redlines that we given to you guys today for consideration, and just, again, just a bunch of gratitude for the CIC on the work that was done for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair? Trustee Gonzalez?
So I think it's, so how will the updated bylaws ensure that the CIC continues to reflect the full diversity of our service area and not just geographic, but income levels, renters in unrepresentative communities? Can I get that question asked? I mean, answered?
Sure. So I do think that between council appointees, the board appointees, and then the at-large that the CIC will select, it is important, and I think that considerations given to the nominees that are brought forward to make sure that when someone does exit the committee, that you look at what kind of role or how you want to fill that space to make sure that there is diversity, and a lot of diversity in thought.
So to a follow-up question, often, we have citizens to be hurt. One of the biggest concerns is working families that can't make it when a meeting starts at 12 o'clock. So now we've increased participation, more meetings, and so for those residents who don't have the flexibility to participate as often, how do we unintentionally discourage working families or lower-income residents from serving on CIC?
Well, there's a couple of ways that the community can stay in touch with the CIC if they're not able to perhaps attend. We do record, we post meeting summaries, and those are available on our website. And then for somebody who's not able, that may be working through the day, we would certainly still take their input. We have an inbox that the community can email, and I know that the CIC members are active in the community to try to get input as well.
What it meant is also maybe potentially a CIC member that may not have flexibility like other members. Not all, not all CIC participants are created equal. So that's really my question.
I'm not sure we can control somebody. I mean, they just won't, they, you know, we wouldn't know if somebody was able or not able, because they're just not going to apply if they can't participate at the time the CIC needs.
We're increasing meetings, correct?
We're going from four to at least six full CIC meetings.
Okay, that's not that many. So my last question would be, I just want to make sure that, again, we have safeguards in place at these bylaws, make sure that the CIC remains an independent community voice rather than seen as an extension of the staff for the board. So that's my last comment. Thank you.
Understood.
I would just add that the last meeting I went to, Chris Fullerton brought his little girls, and we meet in that room. It's huge, and they were fine.
I mean, I've had the opportunity to participate as well. So again, I just want to make sure, again, the whole purpose of the CIC is, again, to have voices in the community. Again, two to six, I mean, just adding to meetings, I don't see that excessive. I, again, just want to make sure that it becomes, it stays independent, and we have participation.
Understood.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you to Lawson and your executive team. I know you put a lot of work in this, and writing bylaws is one of the least fun things to do, because you have to think about all the possible consequences of everything you change. So we have a motion and a second on the board for approval, and roll call vote, please.
Vice Chair Dr. Mackey? Trustee Steen? Mayor?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, great. Thank you. Ms. Ramirez, will you take us into executive session, please?
Yes, ma'am. At this time, the board is going to recess into executive session to discuss matters that have been duly posted under several provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including consultation concerning attorney-client matters under Section 551.071, deliberations and other authorization on real property under Section 551.072, and to deliberate voter-take final action on competitive matters under Section 551.086. At the conclusion of executive session, the board will reconvene in open session and continue the meeting. It's 4:29 PM going into executive session. It's 4:29 PM going into executive session.
All right, Ms. Ramirez.
It is 5:00 PM and the board has concluded executive session. I can confirm that there were no votes taken and no matters were discussed that were not part of the posted agenda. We have a quorum and all members are present.
All right, do you want to review action items?
Yes, ma'am. I do want to note, without going into detail, that there was a number of requests for information on details related to past due accounts that we are working into our periodic updates to you about that subject. So we're going to build those into the updates and we'll get them to you. I believe that the two open items that I had from you, trustee Steen, were closed out today in the minutes. I did add a -- I'm going to recirculate it to the entire board, but the debt summary document from Corey that he referenced today, so I'll circulate it to everyone. I am going to double check into -- I wasn't totally sure I followed, but I'm going to listen to the recording and make sure that the postings and the links for the special meetings and the board meetings are accurate on our website. I'll just go through all of those and double check. I have a note on agenda item number 11. We will note trustee Steen's ongoing objections to STEP and continuing that program. And then I have a request for the real estate master plan update to the entire board.
One addition was thinking about how we can look at the STEP program and its approach in light of closing, reducing rather, the number of accounts delayed, et cetera. Yeah, how do we think about those two things together? An approach that allows us to do that. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you.